Okay, sorry, sorry, but for the wait, everybody. The hour is now seven thirty-four. So we're sorry about the little delay here. I'd like to call to order tonight's study session board meeting for Tuesday, August fourth, two thousand and twenty. Could I please have a roll call?
Member Carter?
Here.
Member Demmett?
Not here.
And member Patton?
Here.
Member Plasky?
Here.
Member Fisher is here. Vice President Exum?
Here.
And President Hall?
Here. Mr. Demmett is not here because he is out of town on vacation, just to clarify. Okay, um, I need to make a call for additions, corrections, and modifications of tonight's agenda.
I'd like to move that we amend tonight's agenda to remove the resolutions that in the, in the motion section.
I'll second that.
And to be deferred to a later date.
Second.
Moved in seconded, uh, roll call, please.
Member Carter?
Yes.
Member Patton?
Yes.
Member Plasky?
Yes.
Member Fisher votes yes. Vice President Exum?
Yes.
And President Hall?
Yes. Motion passes and, uh, items ten point one and ten point two will be removed from tonight's agenda and placed to a later date. We have a large quantity of citizen statements which we're going to be starting on in a minute. I just wanted to let everybody know how this is going to work tonight. We do have many people present in the boardroom. Uh, member Palowski, member, uh, Fisher is here. I'm here and present, and we have several administrators, um, as well. We're going to be allowing citizens who are here to potentially come in and give statements. I don't know if we, we have one so far. And then the rest of the citizen statements, we've been receiving, um, uh, via email, so I will be reading those out after we have our in-person citizen statement. I'm going to be not wearing my mask when I'm reading and when I'm speaking because I don't want to muffle what I'm going to read, but, uh, just bear with me as I try to get through everything. So first person, please.
Hi, my name is Linda Reynolds. And, um, good evening. I got a letter today, so I've been writing it, which would be better. I am here to speak of many concerns that are at hand. As life has not slowed down in my realm of life, I am thankful that God has put every second of life in that, that I can step outside of my room to personally support family and everyone. And what this unjust cause will affect. I understand that the school district and its job as the school district pushes forward. I do not understand how the district labels better together when this is not the fact involving the school district students, families, teacher, staff, and communities as a whole. Influenza does not have a cure, but only a Band-Aid. As we have been in the fight to fight off diseases, we see many more diseases have come to surface over the years. And when I see immunization records from more shot, with more shots needed for grandchildren compared to my children. What my children needed on the list, it has grown significantly. The coronavirus is latching on to everything it can see and passes by to latch on to. I am speaking to all board members. There is no cure. You are sending our children, families, teachers, staff, communities to be harmed, even in cases to death. As we have been blessed to know the wicked of this COVID nineteen represents, it is up to our district and all of the people in the district to determine what is best for all. As we all know how broken our district has been, this is pouring salt into open wounds. Our minority children are at high risk factor along with mostly minority students in our district. Children and staff with underlying health conditions, compromised, compromised immunity systems, this is even more of a red flag. It is not even just to go through the unknown. It is not enough just to go through the unknown than to unreasonably add more to the unknown. Our children have the right to voice their opinion in this. Our children are for once expecting us to get good trouble, to get into good trouble as adults in a decision-making for the safety and well-being of all students. Blue season will be upon us. Forethought. Us all who are working, living in the trenches of this wickedness. This is an unfair decision forced upon teachers, staff, students, families, and communities. Here we go with the divide again, and what happened to what was the right thing to do? To those who are better protected because they are not in the trenches, I see their eyes are closed. How about money? How much money are you wagering on lives? The district has been given funding to support every child everywhere surrounding the district we are in, to supply work, working Chromebooks to all, not damaged Chromebooks with problems so children cannot prosper and grow. Free Wi-Fi service, Wi-Fi hotspots to all. It goes on and on for funding allowable for schools. Break out of your box, school board members. The I do know and standing in what you do know is not the new norm. The essential workers, work will be half-staffed due to social distancing. How many essential workers really works essential jobs during this pandemic? To this day, claiming cleaning supplies, disinfectants, disinfectant wipes, cleaners are impossible to get six months later. The price gouging when you, when you can find what you need. Families cannot afford to find the needs to keep away the viruses that live in the air thirty minutes to three hours by getting to school, in school, not mentioning the in-between before getting home, high-risk factors. My thoughts are I'm signing up for remote learning. I will need all. I will need as all children and this teacher and the teachers who can give all children the best education they can get. Teachers and children are, and most families, work on computers, and this should be easy learning institution. In my case, still learning. I can only pray that their benefit school district will stand up for the children's safety, health, and well-being, and should never be put at risk during an ongoing pandemic. Thank you for your time and your concerns in these matters that are at hand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, I'm gonna begin reading the citizen statements that were emailed to us, and I don't believe we have any more in person. And for the sake of brevity tonight, we have gotten some emails that were all the, the same letter, but signed at various times by different people, so we grouped them together, and then we have individual statements. If I come across one that seems like it's very long, um, I may have to speed up my reading to try and maintain a five-minute limit, which is what we've had to do in the past when we've had lots and lots of messages. I'm, I'm do, do my utmost to get through everything clearly and concisely. And that said, I should take this off. Sorry. Fumbling a bit tonight, folks. Okay. First statement, um, this is coming from three citizens. Erin Anderson, Zach Bell, and Charlie Olken. To the members of the Urbana Students School District, One Sixteen Board of Education. Sorry about that. Okay. Uh, I am writing to you as a local teacher to implore you to vote for a full remote start to the two thousand and twenty, twenty-one school year, extending until Champaign County documents at least fourteen days of zero new COVID nineteen cases. I believe this decision is in the best interest of our students, our staff, and of the broader community, as we will all be directly impacted by the potentially increased spread of the virus that reopening too soon may cause. I understand that we cannot know for sure what will happen, but we can look at our daily reported local number of new cases, at data from other places that reopen schools too soon, and at the kinds of distanced in-person learning conditions we are creating in order to predict that a physical return of any kind right now will not be the safest option, nor provide the kind of nurturing and high-quality teaching and learning opportunities that we all miss and hope for again soon. As many are already planning for a return to remote instruction at some point in the semester, depending on local virus data, why take the risk? Why not start remotely in an effort to avoid any potential remorse? One student, one teacher, one administrator life lost to this virus is one too many. Plus, then we could spend all of our energy and funding making online learning that much more effective and accessible. Working families will be challenging, challenged by a hybrid model nearly as much as they will be by a fully remote start, and it will take the whole community to work together to help ease that childcare responsibility and remove it from our teachers and schools. But if the more complicated option has the potential to save lives, then it should not be a question. Please help by making this a quick decision so that our teachers and families have time to plan and prepare. Sincerely, Erin Anderson, UMS choir teacher. And again, like I said, also signed by, um, Zach Bell, um, who is a UMS seventh-grade teacher, and Charlie Olken, who is a, a citizen. And I also have to apologize in advance. If I mispronounce anybody's names, I'll do my utmost, so thank you again for bearing with me. These are individualized statements. First is from Jill Bowers. To the members of the Urbana School District, One Sixteen Board of Education, I am including a template letter below that I support. This actually sounds like the same hybrid of the previous one. I think, um, this got mixed in with others. I'm sorry. So Jill Bowers was also was a signatory to the same letter that we received previously. Um, scanning it to make sure that I'm correct in saying that, but it does read like the last, uh, the last letter, so I'm grouping her with that one. And, okay. I believe this one is also the same. Boy, I'm sorry, people, I'm off the ball here. This last one is from Katie Dehaven, a special education teacher, who also writes the same letter as Jill Bowers, um, requesting a fourteen-day no COVID, um, start to the school year. Then the next one, I think it was because a paperclip kinda clipped together, I, when I was shuffling them through, so it's my apologies. Sequoia Munoz also, um, signed a letter about dual language. Okay, this is a different one. Thank you. I'm writing to you as an Urbana One Sixteen parent to implore you to vote for a full remote start to two thousand and twenty-one, extending until Champaign County documents fourteen days of zero new COVID cases. I believe this decision is in the best interest of our students, our staff, and of the broader community, as we will all be directly impacted by the potentially increased spread of the virus that reopening too soon may cause. The current plan is set forth does not do enough to put safety and health at the forefront of everything. The singular goal this year should be not one death is acceptable. There are too many variables to safely go back to school, and the way this plan is written, it leaves many students either risking their safety to be in person or getting cut out of the live instruction that others are getting. Your plan also leaves dual-language students as an afterthought. By assigning them to two different teachers who will be teaching different material, you not only do a disservice to the students by not providing them with that dual-language instruction, but you also do a disservice to your own teachers by requiring that they provide materials to students who are not in their class, and then requiring them to absorb that student into their classroom if, more like when, we go to full remote learning because of an outbreak. I understand that we not, cannot know for sure what will happen, but we can look at our daily reported local number of new cases, at data from other places, that reopen too soon, and at the kinds of distanced in-person learning conditions we're creating in order to predict that a physical return of any kind right now will not be the safest option, nor provide the kind of nurturing and high-quality teaching and learning opportunities that we all miss and hope for again soon. One student, one teacher, one administrator life lost to this virus is one too many. Please help by making this a quick decision so that our teachers and families have time to plan and prepare. Sincerely, Sequoia and Victor Munoz. Okay, moving on, we have another group of statements, um, that are following the same template but are signed by several people. Um, this, these, this next batch. Let me double-check everybody to make sure, but, yes. Um, this is signed by Stephen Burgess, Rebecca Powell, Alina Ahmed, Argentina's Kay Coy, A N Paque, Amina Payne, Abby Schrantz, Nathan Stevens, and Nate Wall, who all write to say, "I am emailing today to harness your support for the removal of SROs within UHS. The board committed to spending ten thousand three hundred eight hun- once, I'm sorry, one hundred three thousand eight hundred and thirteen dollars plus three hundred twenty-one three hundred dollars, three hundred twenty-one thousand three hundred dollars per year to fund police presence, without evidence of return on any value in terms of student engagement or deepening learning. The mere presence of police in schools serves to reinforce and accelerate the school-to-prison pipeline, and this is supported by data. In two thousand and sixteen, black students represented fifteen percent of enrollment in public schools across the country, yet they accounted for thirty-one percent of students who were referred to law enforcement or arrested," coming from data from the U.S. Department of Education Civil Rights. "I urge you to revisit the issue again this fall, especially as the reality of the budget shortfall needs to be addressed. For many, school is the only place to access mental health counseling and support. Prioritize the engagement, health, and well-being of UHS students. Eliminating the contract with Urbana Police Department will allow for resources to be reallocated to the supports that students truly need. Sincerely." And again, Stephen Burgess, Rebecca Powell, Alina Ahmed, Argentina Kay Coy, A N Paque, Amina Payne, Abby Schrantz, Nathan Stevens, and Nate Wall. Thank you for those statements. Next grouping. These are individualized students about SROs. This one coming from Christine Janik. Hello, I am an Urbana resident writing to share my strong support for ending USD's outsized and unhelpful contract with the Urbana Police Department. The stats are there showing that black students and students of color are suspended and disciplined at disproportionate rates. Evidence has been presented to you, providing, proving that the presence of police in schools does not actually benefit students and in fact hinders their feelings of safety and ability to learn. What you choose to do with this information is up to you, and the consequences will be on your hands and your conscience. Please harness the power of this national movement and moment to create real positive change in our schools and redistribute funds to where students really need it most. Truancy supports, counselors, and the hiring and retaining of black educators. I mean, uh, and grouped onto that was the statement that was provided, um, previously with the harnessing support for, uh, the three hundred twenty-one thousand, three hundred dollars per year that was a part of the previous email. This again was sent by Christine Janik. Next up, from Kate Popitz. Hello, I'm emailing you today to ask that you please remove all SROs from UHS. As you know, eighty-eight percent of suspensions made in the last year were of black or indigenous people of color. These suspensions lead not to better behavior, but to a higher likelihood of falling behind in school. Students who are likely to be targeted by the police, uh, by, um, black, indigenous people of color students, as evidenced by the above statistic, are less likely to speak out if they believe saying the wrong thing could result in legal trouble. People walking around the corridors carrying deadly weapons, who are affiliated with a historically racist institution, are not going to be the people students turn to when they need help. And you, the school board, have somehow decided to, the police need over three hundred thousand dollars to be in our schools. So who will students of color turn to at school? Is your job not to promote the success of students who are facing the most challenges? Or are some lives disposable to you in the name of white comfort? I am urging you to please end your contract with UPD now. I know you are facing budget shortfalls, and what better part of the budget to cut than the huge segment that jeopardizes student safety and academic expression? This three hundred thousand dollars could fund things that actually support the students, like counselors, truancy support, not punishment, and hiring and retaining black educators. Thank you for reading, Kate Popitz. And this last one in the same group is from Alex Brooks. Eighty-eight percent of total suspensions in two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty were black, indigenous, people of color students. The USD One Sixteen chronic absenteeism is thirty-six percent. In USD One Sixteen, only four percent of black and thirteen percent of Hispanic students meet or exceed mathematics performance levels. Please don't remove police from Urbana. Having gone there, I know firsthand how dangerous it is. Should we work towards better results for our non-white students? Of course. However, don't hold these students to a lower level. While in school in the Urbana system, kids who got in trouble more often would slowly receive less and less punishment for their behavior, just so they didn't get suspended. What this reinforces is an attitude of do no wrong. Suspensions and behavioral modifications have to be hand in hand. Invest in tutoring for students in, in-school suspension. Start working with parents and guardians about keeping their kids in school, plus what works for them. Together, we can make Urbana more equitable. However, please do not sacrifice the safety of students to achieve this. Thank you, former Urbana student of K through twelve grades. Okay. And last group, these are individualized public comments. Starting with Donald Owen. Mr. Demmett and members of the Board of Education, I am submitting this public comment after reading John Demmett's comments and smiled politely on July second, two thousand and twenty. You stated, "The SRO presence was strongly supported by all four superintendents during those twenty-eight years. Actually, all four indicated how helpful the SRO was to maintaining a safe and nurturing environment on our secondary campuses. I take issue with your characterization of my opinion about school resource officers. To say I strongly supported the SRO presence at UHS and UMS is not true. To say that I indicated that the SRO was helpful at promoting a nurturing environment is not true. I can refer you to several board meetings in which we discussed SROs, and I indicated that my vision was for a school system that did not have SROs assigned to our schools. I am categorically opposed to the SRO expansion and the MOU between the district and the city. The MOU does not provide protections for students and teachers' rights, and it also fails to delineate a clear, reliable, and valid evaluation plan. There are no guidelines about how you will ensure that interactions among SROs, staff, students, and families are documented consistently and accurately. On a related issue, I was pleased to read that you, Mr. Demmett, and your wife were leading the charge to change the name of Plantation Point. That is long overdue, and I understand that your views on this topic may have changed over the years since you were the first individual to purchase and build on that street. Change is hard. Personal growth is hard. You are in a role in which you have had many opportunities to attend workshops alongside your teachers related to racial and educational justice. You often told me your views about such workshops. You said you would never attend a workshop about racism or racial bias. I truly hope that those views are evolving, too. Now is the time that you, Mr. Demmett, and the entire board revisit the resolution about commitment to racial equity in USD One Sixteen. The commitment to racial equity is more important than ever. What have you done in the past month to address your role in promoting systemic racism? What have you done in the past month to ensure that the black and brown students in USD One Sixteen are not victims of racist policies and practices? What do you commit to do to ensure that our most historically marginalized and oppressed students are centered in the work you do moving forward? Sincerely, Donald Owen." This one comes from Rhianne Del Gaudio. And I'm going to have to read this very quickly indeed because I fear that it might go past five minutes, so. Dear Honorable Urbana School Board Members, in the fall of two thousand and nine, my husband began his first year of teaching here in Urbana. Like lots of teachers, he got sick, but he didn't want to miss school. He knew the kids needed him, and substitutes are few and far between. He got what he thought was a cold, but he took some Tylenol and went to school anyway. The cold turned into a cough, but he took some Dayquil and went to school anyway. His cough turned into a one-hundred-and-four-degree fever, and he finally went to the doctor that night after being at school all day. A nurse called me as I was bouncing our ten-month-old son on my hip and tried to clean up dinner and do homework with our two older sons. My husband was being rushed to the ER by ambulance. They didn't want me to panic. He was having a hard time breathing. What happened next was nothing short of a nightmare. My husband, a healthy thirty-four-year-old man, a teacher of all, of all of three months, was diagnosed with H one N one, which had turned into pneumonia. I cried in the emergency room outside his room that night and begged for the doctor to tell me he was going to be okay. I will not forget how stoically that doctor told me that my husband's condition was a day-by-day situation. He would promise me nothing positive that night. They put my husband in a coma, on a ventilator, and pushed into a small room in the ICU for weeks. They put long brushes of some kind down his throat to try to scrub the infections out of his lungs. They put a port in his chest. I slept curled up in a small chair next to his bed, listening carefully to the sounds of monitors, praying they continued to keep him breathing. One day, weeks later, he woke up and tried to grab the tube out of his throat. He was scared. He couldn't talk. He pointed at things on a board with pictures on it to communicate with me because he couldn't speak. He wanted a glass of water. He wanted to know where our kids were. He wanted to know how long he'd been asleep. He wanted to know what happened. I was lucky. He eventually got better. He pulled oxygen tanks behind him for weeks and held our baby son again. He gets to be a teacher and a father and a husband again, but also here we are again, and it's even more devastating. It's more confusing and insidious than anything I've ever lived through. Seemingly healthy people can make us sick enough to die. We can't hug our parents or see our friends. We can't go to movies, and baseball games have sounds of the crowds dubbed over the top with cardboard people in the stands. Somehow, though, we're making a decision to send our children and our teachers back to school. I am a behavior interventionist in a public school. My husband is still a teacher. Our son, who was an infant in two thousand and nine, is eleven years old. We're cont- we're contemplating a return to school in August and know firsthand the absolute terror of contracting an illness that you cannot stop from trying to kill you. We have little control over the path we will take to protect ourselves because our districts have decided we will return whether we as individuals feel this is safe or not. This isn't novel to us because the entire state, the entire nation, is engaged in this. Teachers everywhere are having the internal struggle of trying to keep themselves and their families, their students, and their families safe, but still try not to let the educational gap that began last spring widen any further. The truth is that we can't teach students who have died, and teachers who have died can't teach. The guidelines we have been supplied to enforce are untenable. We're teaching children, not robots, and they don't adhere to mask-wearing or staying away from other human beings, like peers or beloved teachers, just because we say so. It is developmentally inappropriate to put just a task on a child of five or six, or even eleven or twelve. It is a responsibility too great for a child, and the guilt and trauma that would lay upon them if one of their teachers got sick or even died would be enormous, far greater than the trauma of a few missed months of school. I believe a teacher would not recover from the responsibility felt if a child were sick on her watch. I would leave my profession and not return. I know this already. The burden of, of losing a student to this virus would be overwhelming. I've watched my own child, who's getting ready to go to middle school, deal with the restrictions he was never used to. Stay away from others. Wash your hands. Don't touch your face. Wear a mask in public. It's hard for him. He sees a friend, and he instantly wants to run near them. He hasn't seen a peer in person since March. All his brothers and sisters live out of the home. He's a middle-school boy and needs constant reminders to wash his hands, stop touching things, keep his hands off his face. Wearing a mask, although he's been wearing one since March, is so hard for any longer than an hour. He moves it to sneeze or cough or get a breath frequently. While he logically understands that the point of the mask is to stop those things from being shared with others, he instinctively moves it to keep it from being on his face. He won't be the only kid doing it either. Why? Because he's a child. Asking them to keep adults safe is a task we shouldn't put upon them, and when I think that that is what I am depending on to keep my husband and myself and my colleagues and my friends safe, I cannot picture going back to school without a vaccine or at least a treatment for COVID nineteen. While we know that school is vital for people to go back to work, as it is where children get, go to be safe while parents work, please understand it is by no means safe. These are impossible circumstances for children to be responsible for and for teachers to try to make them be. We know that minority students and low-income students will fall further behind. We know how much wider the gap will be, especially when the gap was a canyon to begin with. However, I can't teach students who aren't alive to be taught. I can't heal their trauma when they bring this virus home to their families, and it kills someone important to them. None of us can change the trajectory once we start putting children in classrooms. Over four million people have been infected in this country, and I have no reason to believe that putting a bunch of the smallest and most vulnerable among us into one building and hoping for the best will be safe or sustainable in any way. I've taken note that the district has responded to the rising cases of COVID nineteen in Champaign County and some of the teacher requests for safer conditions in their recent correspondence to families in the last days. There are some concerns that I would like to address, however. One, offset childcare for elementary students helps ease some of the burden. Is that five minutes? Okay. There are several questions and, uh, saying, "Please consider strongly the decisions you are making. There are no easy answers, and for the superintendent, many administrators, central office, we've made timely decisions to support our families. Appreciate all your hard work and dedication. Sincerely, Rhianne Del Gaudio, parent of UMS student, wife of USD One Sixteen teacher and a public educator." Okay, this one is written by a large group of signatories. Dear USD One Sixteen and Board of Education, thank you for offering remote-only learning. My family can now safely do school from home, and for that, I am grateful. I'm writing today again because this isn't about just my family. It's about the teachers and staff. It's about new parents with infants and those taking care of their elderly parents. It's about communities disproportionately hit by this virus. It's about rising numbers of cases and a government that has failed to fund schools and childcare. This is a community issue. Our community issue to solve. COVID nineteen cases are going up, not down. At the last meeting, a board member mentioned that Urbana only had five active cases. As of the writing of this letter, we now have over nine times that in zip code six-one-eight oh one and six-one-eight oh two, with the latter zip logging the highest number of cases in the entire county last week. Our neighbors in Champaign now hold this title. This disturbing uphill trend is occurring even before the university students return to campus. A month ago, we were hopeful that children would not be as susceptible to the virus and less contagious than adults. Now, statistics show the under-eighteen-age group growing in cases, and new studies show children over the age of ten transmit the virus just like adults. Positive cases occurred on the very first day of in-person school in both Texas and Indiana. Hundreds of kids were infected at a camp in Georgia. It is simply not safe to open our schools under these conditions. In a community with rapidly rising numbers, the hybrid model is offering a moderate benefit at potentially a very great cost. On top of this, statistics tell us three communities are disproportionately affected: students of color, low-income students, and students with intellectual disabilities. These are also the students most likely to attend in-person instruction, putting our most vulnerable students at even higher risk along with in-person teachers and staff. most vulnerable students at even higher risk along with in-person teachers and staff. UEA polled their teachers and found only 7% felt comfortable returning to in-person school. 7%. They fear for their own lives, the lives of their families, and the lives of their students. They are reasonably requesting a return to in-person school only when there are no new COVID cases for 14 days. Many parents have stood up for a remote start to keep our community safe. We desperately want our kids back in classrooms, but not at the expense of someone's life. The acceptable number of student and teacher deaths is zero. Parents and teachers across the state are standing up for a safe return to school. State unions are rallying and threatening strikes. Districts all over Illinois are changing their plans to a remote-only start. It's not too late for us to do the same. Now is the time for Urbana to take a stand. We don't have to wait for the governor to make a call or for positive cases to enter our schools. Urbana can do the brave thing right now for our own community. Isn't that the Urbana way? Change our plan tonight. Push back the hybrid start date until there are 14 days of no new cases. Urbana truly is better together, so let's refocus all the dedication and creativity that our district has shown during this time entirely on making remote learning the best it can be and finding more childcare solutions for our families. Now is the time to put funding toward training teachers for online teaching. Now is the time to put energy toward creative academic excellence online. Now is the time to partner with our generous and resourceful community and find even more opportunities for childcare and tutoring pods for those in need. Now is the time to face reality and prepare ourselves fully for what we know is to come: positive COVID cases in our schools. Follow the science. Keep our schools and community safe. Wait for 14 days, no new cases. Vote for a remote-only start tonight, and while we're at it, collaborate with Champaign and surrounding districts to do the same so we can crush the virus here in Champaign County and get our children and teachers safely back in classrooms as soon as possible. Signed. This was written by Jamie Gleisner, Thomas Paine, and UHS parent, and supported and signed by Jody Miller, USD teacher and parent, Lawrence Reed, Ian Ford, Jamie Minnert, Tracy Rasmus and Maxie, Kathy Killian, Ally Donovan, Jennifer Gruber Powell, Erin Anderson, Darian Kuro, Brian Oglesky, Julia Guth, Phil Weber, Katrina Tammer Reber, UMS teacher and parent, Paige Waggoner, Janet Leroy, Lille teacher since 1986, Tony Mancuso, Sue Fristo, Sarah Tabus, Brian Lake, Bob Jacobs, Dana Mancuso, Matthew Murray, UHS teacher, Carolyn Dyer, Laura Koritz, UHS teacher, Mark Sweeney, Tammy Cobb, David Guth, Rose St. Clair, school social worker, Amanda Perez-Rosser, Luis Aguilar, Erica Cooper-Patton, Ellen Archer-Puffer, Karina Diaz-Jones, Colleen Nicole Roth, UMS teacher, Michael Roten, Michelle Brown, Kim Summers, Tara Olson, Noel Hatcher, Heather Schwartz, Shad Barker, David Dunlap, PE teacher, Nora Miller, Melissa Kalal-McMahon, UHS teacher, Caitlin Danishvar, USD teacher, Mark Foley, UHS teacher, Becky Park, UHS teacher, Benjamin Joseph Unander, UHS teacher, Amanda Klusnitzer-Hutchins, Ashley Cho, Cara S. McKinn, Linda Minor, Kelly Allen, Elizabeth Smith, Becky Barker, Megan McGinty, Lola Pittinger, John Minor, Teresa Sweeney, Tiffany Bue, Chuck Koplinsky, Cara Morizzi, Melinda DeValk-Lundberg, Nate Wall, Patty Booth-Hodges, Danielle Yedvobnik, Beth Hansen, Susan Roten, Nathan Westerman, UHS teacher, Dan Doing, UHS teacher, Julie Beckett, UHS teacher, and Maura Williams, UHS teacher, plus 16 teachers who wish to remain anonymous because they're afraid to speak out. From Allison Dunn, Hello, I am a parent of kids at USD 116. Thank you for the work you are doing to open the school. My family will benefit greatly. From Kanita Fay, Dear Superintendent, Board of Education members and administration team, we would like to thank everyone for working tirelessly to come up with solutions to reopen our schools. We are writing to support you to please make a decision to keep all of the community members safe. During this trying time, it is impossible to give everyone what they want, but with your leadership, you can give us what we need to get through this pandemic safely. We would like to start by acknowledging the main concerns we've heard from our community members. One, teachers who are concerned about exposure to COVID-19 at school. Two, parents who are essential workers cannot keep students at home. Additionally, there are a number of students who need to attend school due to a lack of safe and adequate place to study as well as food insecurity. Three, students will need support for their special needs. We would like to support the district to make a decision to, one, protect our teachers and only offer online learning to all; two, provide a safe space with a supervised safety protocol for students who need to attend school every day; however, they will be in the same room every day, learning online, just like the rest of the students in the district. For special-needs students, please refer to the specialists on how to accommodate their needs. Three, provide low-risk after-school activities such as cycling, tennis, archery, to keep students healthy physically and mentally. We appreciate the district's effort to come up with a current in-school plan. However, we are concerned that, one, teachers will still have to be exposed to risk. If one teacher contracts COVID-19 from a student who is asymptomatic, the rest of the students will not be able to learn at all. Two, for parents who are essential workers and cannot afford childcare, two days a week will not solve a problem. Students need a safe space every day. Three, we understand that the district came up with this model partly based upon a survey and earlier optimistic projections that have failed to materialize. However, there are so many families who have said that they will want to start from in-school and drop to online if necessary. By that time, it might be too late to save lives. We hope that this will be temporary until a vaccine is available for all. If you allow in-school learning, we will not be able to stop the spread of COVID-19. We thank you and may God bless us all. Signed, Kanita Fay. From Rachel Heaton, Dear School Board, I'm writing because I have a comment about remote learning groups for the elementary schools in the fall. As far as I can tell from the plan, there will be no effort made to keep kids in the same elementary schools together as they are assigned to remote learning cohorts. I believe this is a serious mistake. Part of learning is feeling comfortable and secure. Many of the children are lonely and missing their existing social connections. One of the most difficult parts of isolation for my daughter has been that she misses the community of her home school. Blending children with kids and teachers they don't know is like making them start a new school on top of an already difficult online format. Kids need to be excited to reunite with their community, even if online, as a way to mitigate some of the apprehension about the online format, which I believe will be shortly thrust upon the whole district again regardless of the plan of record right now. The district should be aware that there is an extremely high likelihood that the way in-person plan will collapse into an all-remote format quite quickly. Given this, it makes sense to keep kids connected to their home schools as they are organized into remote learning groups. Thanks, Rachel Heaton. From Laura Koritz, Dear USD 116 Board of Education, first of all, I do want to thank CU Central Office and Building Administrators for putting together an impressive plan during these bizarre summer months. The pressures they are facing are surely brutal, and they have my appreciation, as do others behind the scenes that are weighing options and trying to plan despite the inherent instability of our collective circumstance. I am not one to speak out, and I prefer to keep my head down. However, I'm terrified. Like many, I'm growing increasingly worried about returning to teach at Urbana High School under the proposed blended model. Believe me, I want to be back in the building because being back makes my job easier. I don't have a toddler climbing the bookcase behind me while I plan lessons, and I find it lovely to be in a room with my students. But being in the classroom is not a good choice until we have a significant testing and tracing plan and are seeing close to zero positive cases in our community. I don't want anyone to get sick or get really sick and have lifelong repercussions from an illness that we know little about or die a scary death by slow suffocation. I don't want that for myself or my family or my colleagues and their families or my students and their families. I understand that this is a trade-off. While there are so many ways I could be better, I'm good at teaching and forming meaningful connections with students. I have over a decade of experience doing this in person compared to only three months of online teaching experience. The kids miss each other, and they get all kinds of positive things by coming to school, though clearly not enough of them. We really could do a better job of taking care of each other even when everything is relatively peachy. Weighing the options, it's not worth the risk of going back in the building, even at reduced capacity, or alternating schedules with or with masks and gallons of hand sanitizer. People are going to get sick, and we're going to wish we had asked them to stay at home. If we go online, I will work my tail off to deliver the best remote instruction I can and to support my kids. I really, truly will. A few more months could buy us significant advances in testing, tracing, and treatment. Until then, I'd rather work to protect myself, my daughter, and my students by staying home. Thanks for reading, Laura Koritz. This is from, I'm sorry if I mispronounce it, Peggy Frykowachek, to the members of Urbana 116 School Board. I'm a former teacher and taught in the Urbana School District. I'm concerned about the safety of students and staff members if schools are reopened too soon during the COVID pandemic, even if it's a combination of online and part-time in the classroom instruction. One, I taught kindergarten and first grade in Urbana and had to stop teaching due to health concerns. When I stopped teaching, my family stopped getting sick, so I had been the one bringing the germs home to my husband and sons, even though I was fastidious about handwashing, et cetera. Two, I know children. It will be impossible to get them to follow the safety protocols while at school. Three, the National News announced new research over the past weekend that children are now known to be passing the virus even more readily than adults, not less, as has been previously thought. Four, also over the weekend, the National News announced that in order to reopen schools safely, COVID testing should be done on all students every other day because the facts show that people don't exhibit symptoms right away yet are able to spread the virus before the symptoms appear. Five, many schools are taking temperatures to determine if someone has the virus. It may tell you if someone has a fever, but will do nothing to identify asymptomatic individuals. This may help to reassure parents, but it really is just promoting a false sense of security. If you have the virus but don't have symptoms like a fever, yet taking your temperature will not show that you are ill. Six, having a child or adult who is ill but asymptomatic coming into your school would be like having someone come into your building carrying a concealed weapon. That would never be allowed. So with the same reasoning, why would you allow a virus carrier who is potentially just as lethal to enter your building? Unfortunately, any of us could be concealed carriers, and you may not exhibit any signs saying you are ill. The difference between a person who has the virus coming in and a person carrying a gun is that you have a choice about using the gun but not about passing on the virus. You may not intend harm to anyone else but could potentially pass the virus along to other students and staff, who then take it home to infect their families. With exponential spreading, the results could be disastrous. Seven, that the economy is in such trouble does not change this fact. Eight, neither does the fact that our president is recommending that schools reopen, even to the point of threatening to cut education funding if schools don't comply. This is a life and death issue, not a political issue. Nine, our children are our most precious resource. The lives of students, teachers, and school staff members are priceless. Ten, according to experts on the news, we need to have the ability to conduct rapid testing before any children and staff can safely return to a full-time in-school setting. Eleven, I'm especially concerned about at-risk students returning too soon to the classroom. In my experience, these students are considered at risk for a number of reasons. As long as infected asymptomatic people are allowed in schools, having at-risk students return to the classroom would just compound their issues by exposing them, our most vulnerable student population, to the virus. I truly understand the need to give them the extra support, but I sincerely hope no one is considering them as expendable if things go badly. Twelve, I realize that schools are already reopened in other countries, however, the curve had been flattened by the time their schools reopened. Thirteen, remember that the COVID virus spreads exponentially. Just yesterday, we had 48,000 people in the US contract the virus as of Monday, August 3rd. Keep in mind that Georgia YMCA summer camp, where the staff wore masks and over 230 children tested positive with the virus. The camp was only open for four days. This may sound extreme, but given the exponential nature of the spread of the virus, a single infected person unknowingly could cause the death of many people. Why risk the lives of students and staff members? Please wait until the needed tests are available and a credible, safe plan exists. Oh, okay. Oh, okay. Thank you. Okay. One moment, please. Okay. This one, coming from Kristi Lee, I'm writing to publicly share my thoughts about plans for the 2021 school year. First, I want to say that I appreciate all that's been done to make these difficult decisions. Since the 60/40 remote and in-person hybrid plan for Urbana was announced, I've spent a lot of time thinking about both that plan and if things were to be 100% remote. After much thought and weighing of pros and cons, I believe that a 100% remote plan should be considered for all. Some of the reasons I arrived at this conclusion are: With an all-remote plan, teachers can focus their energy on making it the best it can be rather than having to juggle both in-person and remote learning at the same time, which could result in neither being done well. I have confidence that USD 116 teachers can create meaningful learning for all students using remote platforms if given the opportunity to focus on this task. There is a likely chance that the hybrid plan will shift to all-remote because of community or statewide increases in COVID-19 cases and/or have to cycle in and out of school for two weeks at a time if someone in the class or school becomes ill. A remote plan would provide stability, as would not be dependent on stable COVID numbers to continue. The level of cleaning and disinfecting that will have to happen on a daily basis is no small task, and I'm concerned about the availability of appropriate staffing and supplies to ensure this is done properly. A remote plan does not come without challenges. Here are a few of the challenges I thought about. Childcare and access to adult support at home for working families and families with multiple children requiring support. This would also be a challenge with the hybrid plan, which has 60% of the learning being remote. Technology and internet access for all students, also a challenge with the hybrid plan. Some students do not respond or engage well with remote platforms, also a challenge with the hybrid model. Lack of personal connection with teachers and peers. This will also be challenging with the hybrid plan as teachers attempt to connect from a distance and students have to collaborate and engage with their peers from a distance. For the students whose needs and/or family circumstances necessitate in-person learning, consider having designated teachers to do the in-person learning with these students in blended classrooms, K1, 2, 3, 4, 5, for example. This way, teachers can focus on in-person learning or remote learning, but not both. I also believe that going all-in with remote learning will uncover hidden gems that will be wonderful additions to the learning experiences when full-time in-person learning resumes. Going back to normal would be nice, but going back to a better normal would be great. There is no perfect plan, but I believe that the stability a remote plan would provide outweighs the challenges. Signed, Kristi Lee, parent of one Urbana 4th grader and three Urbana graduates. From Linda Larson, Dear Board Members, I echo the voices of so many others that it is unsafe to send our kids to school at this time. I fully recognize the burden that online learning places on families and teachers, and I fully recognize that online learning is not ideal for the majority of our students, especially the most vulnerable students. But is it worth it to risk the health and safety of everyone for a mere eight to 10 hours of in-person instruction a week? 10 hours of in-person instruction hardly alleviates the childcare burden that many parents are facing. 10 hours of in-person instruction means that most instruction is still happening online. Please focus the district's limited resources on creating a quality online learning experience for our students, as well as providing reasonable childcare options for those who desperately need them. There are no good options, but there are better options. Let's choose those. Signed, Linda Larson, parent of a 10th grader at UHS. Melissa Littlefield writes, Dear Dr. Ivory Tatum and members of the Urbana School Board, I've written to you several times before, both individually and as part of a group of concerned parents. My son attends UHS, and we've been in the district for nearly 15 years. Based on the rising caseload in the US and in our local community and the scientific research that has been emerging about children and COVID-19, I oppose the full reopening of Urbana schools. For the safety of the students, teachers, and CU community, USD 116 should be planning for a fully remote academic year for as many children in the community as possible. I stand by this and believe that the Board can still change course. However, if the Board plans to go ahead with its current hybrid model, I want to request that the Board allow time for public comment between the presentation of the USD 116 plan for reopening and its vote on the plan. Both should not take place at the same meeting. Moreover, the Board must provide more time for families to make decisions about choosing the remote option. The August 7th deadline is just a few days after the Board makes its plan public. Details about the reopening plan are not yet available. While I understand that this is a challenging time and that the Board has been working diligently to make decisions for a diverse community of teachers, students, and families, this rush to vote and choose is unacceptable. We all, parents, teachers, and Board members, need more time to analyze the plan, which we've not yet seen, and make informed decisions about the health and welfare of our children, our families, and our communities. I urge you to not only delay the Board's vote on the reopening plan, but to move the start of the school year back, perhaps even into September, to provide more adjustment time for teachers and families and more time for families to determine if the remote option is right for them. Thank you for your time. Sincerely, Melissa Littlefield, USD 116 parent. This one from Julia and David Guth, Dear Superintendent Ivory Tatum, President Hall, and members of USD 116 Board, just as we stood with hundreds of Urbana educators and families two years ago, we stand again today to underscore that we believe that educators need a safe environment in order to teach, and students need a safe environment in order to learn. We were among the many families and educators who joined the statewide initiative, Illinois Safe Return to School, in a car parade in downtown Urbana earlier today. This was written last week. The mission of this statewide initiative is to delay return to in-person school until our counties report no new cases of COVID-19 for at least fourteen days. Please find a link to the media coverage here, and it links to a News Gazette article. As a district who historically guides its decisions based on evidence-based data, we are deeply concerned by the current proposed plan to reopen schools despite the increased COVID-19 cases in Champaign County, particularly among those ages eighteen and younger. According to the following link, which features today's data from Champaign County Public Health Director Julie Pride, out of the county's one-thousand-two-hundred-and-eighty confirmed cases, nineteen percent are under the age of eighteen. There's a YouTube link here that says, "Per Julie Pride, we are exactly one case away from our peak earlier this year. Things are going in the opposite direction and are actually getting worse." While we continue to be extremely grateful for your countless hours of leadership, innovation, and planning, we urge you to take a few minutes to watch Public Health Director Julie Pride's update above and make an evidence-based decision for a safe return to school, which is guided by our current public health data. In accordance with our Public Health Director's guidance and the statewide Safe Return to School initiative, remote learning is the safest way to return until we have no new cases in our county for fourteen days. With sincere appreciation, Julia and David Guth. Okay. This is from Nora Love Miller. Two letters from Nora Love Miller. The first, Monday, July 27th, was a day of action for teachers to express their concerns about returning to face-to-face instruction and request remote start for our schools until COVID numbers decreased dramatically. What I discovered through the planning of this small call to action is that many teachers are afraid. They are afraid to speak out about how they fear for their safety because they believe there will be district retaliation and potential firing. They fear speaking or attending an event that expresses their true feelings because they are afraid to offend the planning committees who have been working all summer. These fears are bringing silence to voices who need to be heard, so I am here to amplify them. I do not believe that our district wants to be a place where people fear speaking their minds. In fact, I think the opposite. I hope that you all will find ways to listen and create an environment where your staff feels safe to share their true opinions on the return to in-person instruction. With warm thanks, Nora Love Miller. And second letter. During this very challenging time, I'm seeing people talk about outdoor schools but haven't heard anything about this topic coming from schools. As we've seen in our own history, as well as many countries that have returned to school outside, it seems like one of the obvious choices of how to go back to in-person instruction in a safe fashion. Many of our schools are adjacent to UPD property and could be used as outdoor extensions of our classrooms. I know some teachers may not be interested in teaching outdoors, which is why this may not be an idea that has made it to the table. This is true, but there are many who would love the ability to teach in a setting that was as low-risk as outside. It is also possible to have this be an option for those families and teachers who would be thrilled at the idea of being able to facilitate learning utilizing the outdoors. There are many studies that show that green space is beneficial to students who struggle with the ability to maintain sustained attention to tasks. Dr. Andrea Faber-Taylor at the University of Illinois has done multiple studies on this and related topics. With a long time away from school and additional trauma our students have faced during the pandemic, I believe it could not only be beneficial in regard to decreasing the potential spread of COVID-19 within classrooms, but also support the many new and different social and emotional needs our students will undoubtedly have. We have the ability to ensure that our outdoor spaces are accessible to our students and create low-cost outdoor spaces. There would be minimal, potentially in the form of open-air tents that would allow for teachers to create more warm and supportive environments for learning than what can be attained in classrooms that have been set up to prevent the sharing of airspace. According to the ISBE Childcare Weather Watch, students must be taken indoors when wind chill temperatures reach below ten. Due to our weather being colder than this during winter months, we could plan for a longer winter break and extend these classes further into the summer, or simply transition to indoor space when it is cold. Children have learned that new and different routines in COVID cases have gone down significantly. The access to appropriate outdoor gear may also be of concern, but this again is something that can be remedied through the use of our community connections, and many grants through outdoor companies exist. Blanking my screen, I'm sorry. Outdoor classrooms are an attainable, accessible, and potentially lifesaving way to return to person-to-person education, and I would love to see it become a part of our plans to support our students and families. We're in a place where we need to think outside the box in order to ensure the safety of our teachers, students, and staff. I believe many families and teachers, like myself, would feel more at ease with the physical space that allows for social distancing and the fresh air available. This is one of my areas of passion, which I have experienced in knowledge. I lived in a large canvas tent for over a year, much like those that might be used for this purpose, and have spent many hundreds of hours researching tents. I highly recommend the company that made mine, Davis Tent and Awnning. I would love to collaborate with the other teachers and staff in the district who shared this interest to create some clear plans to present to the district. Thank you for your time and all the work you do. Warmly, Nora Love Miller, USD one-sixteen, early childhood teacher and parent of UHS students. Sorry for blanking out my screen there. From Felipe Meninto. During last year's November and December meetings of the school board and the Urbana City Council, many of us stood up to express our deep concerns with the proposal of putting armed police in the Urbana schools. At the end, unfortunately, most of you decided that it was in the best interest of the community, particularly the Black and Latinx community, to spend more than $320,000 to have armed police in our schools and to pay for their guns, cars, and gas masks. Most of you are white people with tons of privilege. I'm thankful that some discussion occurred that resulted in welcomed amendments that put some safeguards for the students and a review protocol for the contract with the police. But at the end, this only resulted in a slightly less revolting agreement. However, I would like to thank board members Ruth Ann Fisher, Anne Hall, and Peggy Patton for proposing this contract and for expressing this was not in the best interest of our community. In case this hasn't been already emphasized enough, I would like to remind you that there is a body of research showing that increased police presence does not result in safer schools and that increased police presence is correlated with increased juvenile incarceration. In fact, more social workers, counseling staff, and trauma-informed practices would go further to root out the systemic issues that are actually driving the violence we sometimes see in schools. We can all agree that a lot has happened since last December. The zeitgeist of the country has changed. We've seen thousands, alone and in families, come out to protest racial injustice and support the Black Lives Matters movement here in Urbana and also in Champaign. But we've also been disappointed by the arrests and beating of Aleah Lewis at the hands of the Urbana police and how the Urbana School Board has so far remained silent while your neighbors in Champaign Unit Four have already passed a resolution declaring systemic racism a health crisis. How much longer do we need to wait for change to happen? While the country seems to have finally awakened to the reality of racial injustice and we hear loud calls to defund police departments, a progressive town like Urbana seems to be heading in the opposite direction. It looks like we want to stay on the wrong side of history. I believe that we all have a mission to avoid this, so I would like to urge board members to move in the right direction and cancel the intergovernmental agreement between the school district and the city of Urbana and use these resources in the benefit of our community instead. Thank you, Felipe Meninto. Sorry, that got placed in a different pile. This one from Meg Miller. For the safety of our students and staff, I support having online studies until fourteen days pass with no new cases of Corona-19. When students do return, they should spend much of their day learning outdoors. Thank you for your service. Signed, Margaret Miller from East High Street in Urbana. From Mercedes Richardson. To the board members of Urbana School District, I'm writing to you as a parent, community member, and essential worker. At this time, I do not feel the plan that has been vaguely given to parents and staff is sufficient. There's little information and guidance about the remote off-days and full-remote option, giving parents a hard time deciding which option they will choose in just three days' time. With most parents going back to work, and that will still be working during another shutdown, how will this remote program be able to accommodate us and our children? Most daycare are having parents agree that remote learning will not be a responsibility of the facility. With this being said, I do not feel this program, from what has been vaguely presented to parents and staff, is efficient. This program for now and future use needs to be flexible and accessible for all families and students. Furthermore, bringing children and staff back to school while COVID-19 numbers are rising is dangerous and inconsiderate to families and staff. Our children's health and staff's health is the most important things. We need to protect them and lessen any opportunity for spread of this awful virus. We must take strong action to stand together in the fight for our community's health. Please take these points into consideration in your meeting for the finalization of the upcoming 2021 school year. Signed, Mercedes Richardson. From Julia Rush. Hello, I'm sure that you all have received many emails about the safety issues with going back to school at this time. While my main concern is the well-being of my kiddos, I wanted to take a moment to advocate for the mental health of our educators. In the past two months, there have been at least fifteen nights where I've not slept at all. I've been having recurring nightmares about my students getting sick and dying, and I know that many of my fellow teachers and school staff are experiencing very similar things. While I only have a semester of student teaching and a year of teaching in this district, I know that there is a large emphasis on self-care for teachers. The ramifications of going back to school in person while COVID-19 is still a large, life-threatening issue on school staff members' mental health is going to be huge. Our job is to keep our students safe. How can we do that when we do not feel safe? I cannot lie to my students and put on a happy face about being in a situation that puts us and our entire community at risk. As a twenty-three-year-old, I do not have a family. I do not have school-aged children. I only have myself to worry about. While I don't want to speak for them, I've been looking around at my peers that do have families. The stress they are experiencing trying to keep their own families safe, as well as their students, is immense. It is not safe to return to school for anyone. I'm urging you all to practice what you preach about self-care and mental health for your teachers and advocate for not just us, but our community. Signed, Julia Rush, fourth-grade teacher at Yankee Ridge Elementary. This one from Tom Schroder. I would like to celebrate with the Thomas Paine Elementary Community regarding the plans for renovation of their school. I would also like to celebrate with Lille Elementary on the eighteenth anniversary of their renovation. An entire generation of Lille students and families have benefited from better facilities. Some Lille kindergarteners from that first year have now completed their college educations. Community objections about upgrading Lille facilities are what originally inspired the plan to upgrade all elementary schools. Unfortunately, the conservative pace of this project has created generational inequities. Pardon. By the time the first group of Wiley kindergarteners can benefit from upgraded facilities, some of the first group of Lille students will be parents to kindergartners. During this upcoming school year, inequities in elementary facilities will have an added dimension. Students in upgraded schools will learn in comfortable, air-conditioned classrooms. Students in non-upgraded buildings will get all of the comfort that can be provided by open windows and the hot and humid air of late summer. Signed, Tom Schroder, Urbana resident and parent of three district students. From Elizabeth Chin. Hello, my name is Elizabeth Chin, and I'm a parent of two Urbana students, and at this time, I'm also employed with the school district as an early childhood teaching assistant. This evening, I would really like to address my concerns about the return of the pre-K students. While I know this has not been an easy task, and I do greatly appreciate the district's effort in making a plan to ensure the safe return of students, I feel like our administrators have forgotten how young children learn. Every developmental practice we've ever been taught says that young children need hands-on learning through play. In every early childhood room I've been in, you will see young children acting out many different scenarios. There could be a group of children in dramatic play pretending to take care of a baby, or perhaps cooking dinner for their friends. In the block center, you will see children create the most amazing things with blocks. Sometimes it's a castle, and they brought over the dinosaurs from science to help bring their vision to life. You will see children painting with friends at the easel, and they love to peek around to see what their other friend has just painted. You will see our youngest, most impressionable students learning and having fun with their friends. I know children that were best friends in pre-K and still to this day are best-of-friends. Preschool is about social interactions and developing positive relationships with adults and peers. This is the exact opposite of what you will see this year. There will be no easel to paint on, there are no blocks to build with, and no babies to take care of. You will see children sitting at a table for longer than they ever should. You will see that they only have a certain amount of toys to play with because they can't share and create together. I'm for in-person learning when we're able to safely and with developmentally appropriate practices implemented, and this model does not currently support that. Signed, Elizabeth Chin. From Kim Summers. I'm an English teacher at Urbana High School. Thank you for taking time to listen to my concerns about returning to in-person instruction during this global pandemic. Teachers would much rather be in school with our students every day, but we only want to go back when we are not putting our students' lives, our families' lives, and our own lives at risk. As a teacher, I have always promised my students that I will do everything in my power to keep them safe. Returning to in-person instruction during this global pandemic is not keeping them safe at all. It is imperative that Urbana schools participate in remote learning until the number of COVID-19 cases have been zero for at least fourteen consecutive days. Fewer diagnosis does not mean safety. Until there are no new cases, no one is safe. Teachers will be able to help students recover academically, but we cannot recover the lives that will be lost to this virus as it spreads through our schools and into our families and community. The only acceptable number of deaths for students and teachers is zero. There have been many comments made that teachers should be required to go back into the classroom since we are essential workers. While teachers are incredibly important, we are not essential employees since we can effectively educate our students remotely. As a district, we must also educate our kids in the safest way possible. Given the time and resources to plan appropriately, remote instruction will be effective and safe. We cannot use the experience of remote teaching from the end of last year to determine if it could be effective because teachers were not given the time nor resources to implement a learning model to best meet the needs of our kids. Sociologically speaking, I completely understand that some parents who are essential workers need schools to reopen so that they have a safe place to send their children while they work. I understand the financial and emotional hardship daycare has on the working class. As a school district, we need to work with city, state, and federal agencies to offer support to these families, but it is not the responsibility of teachers to provide childcare for our students. Our job is to educate our students, something we can do effectively from home. Normally, I would be preparing for the new school year. I would be updating curriculum, finalizing unit lesson plans, and creating a welcoming environment in my classroom for the kid's first day at Urbana High School, since I primarily teach freshmen. I would be reflecting on my past eight years of teaching, leading, and learning for my students. Instead of planning, I'm currently working with a lawyer to update my will and make sure all my personal affairs are in order since I'm being forced to return to a building where germs and diseases thrive. I know that many of my colleagues are doing the same, since the UEA survey found that only seven percent of respondents were comfortable with returning to in-person instruction. This means that ninety-three percent of your teachers recognize how deadly this situation is for ourselves, our students, our families, and our community. Please do not ask me to choose between my life and my job. Ten years ago, when I began the Master of Education program in order to obtain my teaching certificate, a professor asked my class if we were willing to die for our students. We were talking about the rise in number of school shootings in the U.S. and how it is a teacher's responsibility to keep all their students safe. I really struggled with this question, since my son was in elementary school at the time, and I did not know if I would be able to step in front of a bullet to keep my students safe when my son would be forced to grow up without a mother. I knew that if I could not answer yes to this question, then I should not become a teacher. Every year, I tell my students this story, and I promised them that I would take a bullet for them. I promised them that I will do everything I can to keep them safe, and this is not a promise I take lightly. However, I cannot make this promise to them this year because I know that I cannot protect them or myself from COVID-19. If we knew that there was going to be an active shooter at the school and we return, everyone, board members, administration, teachers, parents, and community members, would do everything in their power to keep our kids and teachers safe. Statistically speaking, COVID-19 is more dangerous to our school than an active shooter. We cannot always stop a school shooter from entering our schools, but we can stop COVID-19 from entering our schools. Why would we put our students at unnecessary risk if we do not have to? Until the number of new COVID cases is zero for fourteen consecutive days, in-person instruction puts our students and our teachers in danger. We all want what's best for our students, and in the current situation, remote learning is it. Thank you for listening and for your time. Signed, Kim Summers, National Board Certified Teacher, UHS English teacher. This is anonymous. I'm writing to express specific concerns with opening Urbana High School for in-person or partially in-person instruction. In particular, I'm concerned for the following reasons. One, recent research has shown that adolescents may experience and spread COVID-19 more similarly to adults than children. This presents heightened risks for students, teachers, staff, and families. Two, if students at UHS must move between classes, they will not be able to stay in small cohorts as the health district recommends. Thus, in-person instruction at UHS will be in the highest-risk category described by the health district. Three, high schoolers are generally capable of staying home without an adult present. Therefore, fully online instruction will not present childcare issues for parents. In fact, having high schoolers home full-time may make coordinating childcare for the hybrid model easier for many families with younger siblings. Four, a number of research studies have shown that online high schools, which have existed for decades, can be very successful even for at-risk students. In short, in-person instruction at UHS is not necessary while the virus is still circulating in our communities, and it presents a much higher risk to the health and well-being of students and teachers. We do not want to end up like schools in Indiana that saw the virus gain traction in schools within hours. Please seriously consider making UHS fully remote until the virus is under control and let our focus be on ensuring equitable access and creating high-quality online instruction. Signed, Concerned Urbana High School Teacher. From Joel and Sarah Whittington. Our son Henry is an incoming third grader at Dr. Williams Elementary. In our three years at the school, we've grown to know and care for our Dr. Williams family greatly. Our sense of community is deep. The Dr. Williams family has already lost a parent to COVID-19. One is one too many. We have every confidence that our staff can later accommodate any delays with our students' educations that would come from an abundance of caution right now. We know this community can rise to the challenges of remote learning while also keeping us safe, as we did so in the spring. But we cannot bring back lives lost due to pressure to defy the current numbers, logic, and science. It is too great a risk. Therefore, we implore you to only virtually open schools this fall. This is the only choice that will not later be looked back upon with regret. Again, signed, sincerely, Joel and Sarah Whittington. Okay, this one's signed by several people, but it's long, so I'm going to try my very best to get this within five minutes. Thank you for your continued work in ensuring the safety of our students, staff, and surrounding community. We familiarized ourselves with the guidelines and reviewed recommendations by experts. It is clear you've been using these guidelines. It is clear you've been using these guidelines, and we appreciate you using scientific expertise for your plans. Former US Secretary of Education Arne Duncan said three benchmarks must be achieved before in-person will be safe. One, number of cases trending in a downward trajectory. Two, rapid result testing, so results can be provided quickly and acted upon quickly. Three, a positivity rate under 5%. Currently, Champaign County has only met one of these benchmarks. The positivity rate is under 5%, however, spent increasing. We do not have a rapid result testing available. The News Gazette confirmed in their article from August 2nd that partnering with the U of I for rapid testing for K-12 schools is a long way off. Finally, cases are not trending in a downward trajectory, they are increasing dramatically. We believe these three benchmarks must be achieved prior to reopening schools. Based on our resumes, higher education degrees, and extensive experience, we're experts in elementary ed. Not only are we experts, but also one of the key stakeholders in this district. Given our knowledge and expertise, we believe it's imperative to reopen schools when safety can be assured to both students and staff. We've provided you with a list of requirements in the July 24th public comment and agree with all requirements specified by the UEA. We implore you to adopt a policy that requires 14 days of no new cases in Champaign County prior to resuming in-person instruction. During the July 24th board meeting, you sat in separate rooms, breathing without a mask, and meeting virtually. We feel it's important to highlight that you're clearly aware of the risks of being in one room together. That is exactly what you're asking of your teachers and students with the current hybrid model. We see this board meeting as being conducted in more of a hybrid model, even though the cases in Champaign County continue to rise to the highest level since the pandemic began. We're concerned for your safety in the same way we're concerned for our students' safety and our own. We ask you to think about what you're asking of our elementary students. If we use a proposed hybrid model, they will be greeted on the first day by a teacher they barely know, also wearing a mask, face shield, and protective gown. This teacher will not be able to give the child any signs of comfort. A smile will be covered up, the teacher's calming pat or embrace will be kept at six feet, over the exact opposite of the social, emotional support that we're aiming to provide our students with in-person instruction and might traumatize our students. Many measures are taken to aid children in their transition to kindergarten. Even with these measures during a typical year, there are still multiple kindergartners crying daily the first few weeks of class. Who is going to comfort those distraught children from six feet away? The teachers are, placing themselves not just in the more-risk category, but moving themselves up to the highest risk. While kindergartners may provide us with our most stark examples, every grade level will have children struggling. As teachers, we will do what is in our DNA, comforting those children every way we can, but will put our lives at risk. Do not put us in this position of having to choose between comforting a child in pain and protecting our lives. There are masks available that have windows so our children can see our smiles and other nonverbal cues. However, these masks are much less protective than medical-grade PPE, with most of them having ASTM rating of Level 1, three levels below an N95 mask. While these could be helpful in providing our children with comfort, they come at a cost of putting teachers in more risk. More studies are coming out all over the world with conclusion that children are not only as effective as adults in spreading the virus, but can be more effective than adults in spreading it. Considering the conclusion of these studies, teachers need to be protected at the highest levels possible. That includes not only medical-grade N95 masks, but face shields or goggles, hair coverings, and clothing coverings so we're not taking the virus home on our bodies. Furthermore, there is evidence that virus particles are much smaller and are not pulled down as quickly by gravity, so they stay in the air much longer, which makes social distancing not as effective and decreasing transmission, which is precisely why the CDC and other departments of health have given guidelines to have HEPA filtration in poorly ventilated rooms exactly like our classrooms at Wiley. We're concerned about the air conditioning systems in our classrooms because window units flow in one direction. Students and staff in the airflow path are much more likely to be able to spread the virus. Also, the airflow will bounce off of the opposite wall and circulate any virus that's picked up. In the FAQ, it states classrooms will use open windows for ventilation whenever possible. Most of our windows are unscreened. Box fans are not suggested and exacerbate the problem of spreading the virus. This is concerning in hot weather in late August and September with children wearing masks. We also have issues with mold when the air conditioning systems are not being used. We are concerned the current plan would violate the law that states every worker must receive a 15-minute break after four hours of work. We would like more information on what structures will be put in place to avoid this. Also, the plan for students to be taken care of by after-school remote location after the regular school day is over is problematic because students that were an homogenous group in their classroom with their classroom teacher will mix with other students. This contradicts the idea of keeping students in the same classroom, in the same chair, and in the same space with the same teacher makes both environments more unsafe. The reality of the situation is that nearly everything that makes in-person teaching so much more effective than online teaching will be eliminated with the measures we must put in place to keep our students and staff safe. We're currently in the midst of removing nearly everything except for desks and chairs. So many of the materials we use on a daily basis will not be able to be used this year because we cannot share materials. Nearly everything needed to make learning effective is being stripped away for safety. Putting us in our rooms together is increasing our risk. The only safe and effective option is online learning. In addition, based on the data from IDPH in Illinois, one out of every 23 positive cases results in death. Just one outbreak in our school could easily result in 23 cases, so who gets to be the one death? A teacher, a staff member, a teacher's child? What if that one death is a student? What if a teacher was the person that asymptomatic exposed that child? This feels so unimaginably painful and would destroy that child's family, teacher, classmates, and beyond. We simply are not making the decision between in-person and online. We are making the decision between an extremely restrictive, ineffective, and unsafe in-person instruction versus safe online instruction. We must put our students and staff first and choose the safe option, online learning. On July 29th, CUPDH provided an update regarding how many local cases in Champaign County are children. Of all confirmed, which was 1,432, 19% were children ages 0 to 18, or 271 children. All 271 of those cases have been when all of the schools were closed. There's no doubt this number will increase when schools open. Many states started opening, for example Tennessee and Indiana have already had to deal with positive cases shutting schools down. We've even had at least one instance of a school here in Champaign County having a positive case. We've heard of others that have not been reported to the community, which is quite frightening. Other states have already reported drastic increases in the number of deaths of children. We implore you to keep school buildings closed, provide remote learning until it's safe because of the death of a child, stripping away their entire future, which is unequivocally unacceptable. Statistics around the country have proven people of color disproportionately harmed by COVID-19. News Gazette reported this within Champaign County stating currently test positivity rates in Champaign County are much higher for Black and Hispanic residents than white ones. As of July 30th, 13.6% of tests taken by Hispanic residents and 4.2% of tests taken by Black residents came back positive. Test positivity among white residents was 1.3%. Reopening school buildings only when there are no community cases for 14 days aligns completely with our district's commitment to racial equity. Furthermore, Public Health, CDC, and IDPH, even with their Illinois Public Health and Champaign Public Health, even with their seemingly constant-changing recommendations, all agree the safest mode is remote learning. We appreciate the fact sheets that have been released to the families and staff. In spite of this, many of our concerns have remained unanswered and are still keeping us awake at night. When we maintain our focus on the health and safety of our students, remote learning is clear. You have the power to make the just and safe decision to keep our schools working remotely until the virus is under control. Signed sincerely Greg Delgadoio, Sue Foreman, Valerie Willetts, Deborah Long, Jessica Chong, Phoebe Bostwick, Denise Weertalak, Jill Quisenberry, Tanisa Tuttwiler, Sarah Chapman, Melissa Clark, Patty Bergen, Carol Connell, Justin DePaulus Metz, and Dante Lottz. I think I've got three left. Doctor, I'm sorry, this one was from David and Julia Guth, and I believe it was the same one that I read earlier, so sorry. One more. Dear School Board, I wish to voice concern over the proposed school reopening plan, particularly the heavy-handed way in which parents are being asked to make consequential and binding decisions about the format in which their children will participate in school this fall. The information provided to parents about remote learning has been far too scant, and given the unsuccessful nature of remote learning this past spring, I'm worried that the district is not doing enough to actively address the problems and shortcomings of remote learning. Although the school reopening plan states that parents can opt for an all-remote learning experience, there's very little beyond jargon that gives parents an indication of what that remote learning experience will look like. This is especially problematic because the reopening plan states that in a typical week, all students in the district will be participating in remote learning for three of the five days. To feel reassured the students will have a meaningful school experience, I would like to know more about the instructional preparations being made for remote learning. Signed sincerely Stephen Fairbanks, parent of students in ninth, fifth, and third grades. And I have one last one, but I'm just going to look really quickly to make sure I didn't miss any. I don't think I did. Okay, last one from this evening is from Julie Pride. Champaign-Urbana Public District has the role during this pandemic to get out the most up-to-date guidance to assist individuals, families, businesses, schools, employees, and others to make the best, safest choices. We strongly believe that during this unprecedented time, that people should be given all of the information and then be given options based upon their individual circumstances. We do not have any role in developing nor approving plans for schools. After being asked, however, Champaign-Urbana Public Health District staff have reviewed the Phase IV Back-to-School Safety Plan for Urbana District 116. One, CU Public Health suggested that schools offer a variety of options for students, teachers, and staff so that individual decisions can be made related to risk tolerance, personal health concerns, or household health concerns. The Urbana 116 plan meets this goal for students and families of students. It is less clear if there are accommodations for at-risk teachers and staff. Two, Risk of COVID in School Settings is three levels. First is no risk, students and teachers engage in online-only virtual classes, activities, and events. This option is offered for students. It is less clear if at-risk teachers and staff have this option. Two, Minimal Risk, a combination of virtual and small in-person classes, activities, and events. Students and teachers with underlying health conditions are not physically in school. Maintain social distancing and masking at all times. Activities that take place outdoors are generally safer than indoor activities. This option is offered for students. It is less clear if at-risk teachers or staff have this option. And three, Moderate Risk, small to medium in-person classes. Groups of students stay together and with the same teacher throughout and across school days, and groups do not mix. Students remain at least six feet apart, wear face coverings, and do not share objects. This option is offered for students. It is less clear if at-risk teachers or staff have this option. There is no way to keep COVID-19 out of a facility, but it is possible to prevent an outbreak within that facility by strictly adhering to the guidelines for distancing, masking, handwashing and sanitizing, and surface cleaning and disinfecting. The Urbana 116 plan meets these guidelines for students, staff, teachers, and visitors. The success of this plan will be dependent on careful implementation of guidelines, both by the school authorities, teachers, families, and children. The Urbana Plan exceeds the Illinois State Board of Education guidelines in several areas, including transportation plans. And I don't know if there was a second page to that, was there? I'm looking because I thought I saw one with her signature on it. At some point. Oh, thank you very much, okay. Yes, there was a second side, okay. Options are made available for families who choose online learning but need a safe place for their children to work throughout the day where they can use internet, have supervision, and access to breakfast and lunch. There will be cases of COVID-19 in the school setting. Know that Champaign-Urbana Public Health District will be working very closely with the schools when this happens so that we can prevent a widespread outbreak. Please assume positive intent of all those involved in creating the plans. Champaign-Urbana Public Health District will continue to partner with schools throughout this pandemic. This is uncharted territory for all of us, but we all share a common goal of wanting to provide the safest, best education possible. Additionally, we all want to ensure that the health and safety of our teachers, staff, and families, as well as our community, is protected. Let's continue to work together to make sure this happens. This will require patience, cooperation, and vigilance. And this was signed from Julie Pride, the administrator of the Champaign-Urbana Public Health District. And that concludes our public comment for tonight. I'm going to propose that we just take a couple of seconds here. Did you need to go to another room for your presentation? Okay, Dr. Ivory Tatum is going to move to a different room to be able to facilitate presenting the whole presentation for tonight, and I need a drink of water, so. Okay, is everything, are we still waiting, still getting set up? Okay, Jennifer, are you set up? Can you hear me, Paul?
Is everybody back? Just waiting for Randy. Trying to. Okay. I think we're ready. I'm going to unpause. Thanks for giving me a minute to recalibrate in here. Okay, so we're going to go ahead and walk through the PowerPoint.
Oh wait, we still have to make a motion there.
The whole time, so we're going to kind of pass the baton a little bit here. Can everybody hear me?
Jennifer, I think we need to take care of some business.
Okay.
Jennifer, I think we need to take care of some business with regards to the agenda and formally moving from one item to the next.
Okay.
I don't think she can hear us.
So here is our presentation. What, Kim? Oh, yep. Okay, Anne, I think you need to call us back into, back out of the break.
No, we didn't move to have a break, we just took a break. We need to start at 5.0.
I'm waiting, am I good to go?
Anne?
Yeah. Okay, I just want to make sure, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, okay, thank you. So we finished 4.0 citizen statements, we need to move to 5.0. There is no call for an executive session after tonight's current meeting. So now I need a motion to approve tonight's agenda, please.
Move approval as amended.
Second.
Moved in second, enroll call please, Ruthanne.
Member Carter.
Yes, I didn't hear anything Anne just said.
We'll keep going. Okay, and member Patton?
Yes.
Member Plasky?
Yes.
Member Fisher votes yes.
My headphones are not in.
Vice President Exon.
Yeah, that is so weird.
And President Hall.
Hang on one sec, guys, I think I know what it is. The Zoom is still reading my headphones.
Okay, we'll just, one moment for technical.
Okay, now I can hear you guys. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Sorry about that.
All right.
It happens. Okay, so 7.0 is administrative reports, and I don't remember if you had said, Jennifer, that you were going to do that.
Yes.
Instead of 9.0 study topics, this is going to be an administrative report? Okay, so then on with the show.
All right, sorry about that. Okay, so I am going to be sharing this with the team, so there'll be multiple of us popping in here, you guys can see the screen? Yes, okay, perfect, thank you. So I know our time is late, but I know we have a lot of people watching and wanting to hear this. So you guys stop us as we go, it might be more helpful to save questions for a particular maybe priority area all at once because we may answer your questions as we go. But we do have the information kind of chunked in different sections, so it might be helpful to maybe stop at that section and ask questions. You guys, you guys tell us how you'd like us to do it. So right now, we're going to talk a little bit about, these are the areas that we're going to discuss with you. And again, all of this is in the Phase IV Back-to-School Plan that is on our website. It is a lengthy document. We did, as people mentioned in the comments, we have been sharing FAQs all last week to kind of chunk some of this information. So people had some of the really relevant and really important pieces because it is a lot to read. So I know it is taking people a few days to get through it, but we appreciate all the questions we've been getting, and they've been really helpful from board members and from teachers and just people, parents in the community. So we're going to go ahead and go through this. So just to reiterate what the requirements are, from our Illinois State Board of Education, we have five requirements, which we feel like our plan beats. There is a requirement for face coverings and PPE, personal protective equipment. We are prohibited from having more than 50 individuals gathering in one space, as you'll see throughout the plan. We're required to, someone shared with me recently that we like to say physical distancing instead of social distancing. So we're required to physically distance as much as possible. Conduct symptom screenings and temperature checks, or require individuals to self-certify that they're COVID-free when they enter our buildings. And that we need to have a clear plan for cleaning and disinfecting. So those were the five guidelines. When you heard Julie Pride mention that we're meeting these ISBE requirements and exceeding them, these are the requirements that she's speaking of. So we did have some surveys early on in the process to kind of, we had a spring survey that we sent to families around their feedback for how we provide a remote learning in the spring, which helped guide some of our programming. We know, we've said this, I mentioned We know, we've said this, I mentioned it in the beginning of the plan, you know, this was thrust upon us very quickly, and I think our staff responded. I know from the parent feedback that we received from the spring, you know, I know there were some parents that thought we could, maybe could have done things a little differently and better, but I think we did the best that we could in the situation that we had. So we did survey parents to spring and took some of that relevant information to help us do some planning. We also sent another survey out in June that allowed us to begin planning around the ISBE guidance. So this was one of the questions that we felt was most relevant. If we return to school for any amount of in-school learning, will families send their children to school? Eighty percent, and this eighty percent was pretty common, basically, in this particular survey for almost every question we asked. About eighty percent of the family said, yes, they would send their students back, and twenty percent, no, they would not. And right now, I know Kim's going to talk a little bit about the full remote learning, you know, requests that we've gotten. So we've not hit that twenty percent threshold yet. We're about five, creeping toward ten percent, but we're not there yet. So that was the one piece of feedback that we took. This was a really big question all over the state. I mean, we have, I think Urbana, we live in a great community where face coverings have not been a huge mountain for us to overcome. I'm proud of our Urbana community that people wear their face coverings. So, but this was something we wanted to hear from families. If we were, if we're required to require face coverings and masks and six-foot distancing in our schools, will people send their kids to school? And about that same kind of 80/20 split is what we saw. We also did some staff surveying, and again, I know UEA has done a recent survey. We've not seen all the questions and seen all the results, what we've heard about them. We heard about them tonight a little bit in public comment, but this was the data that we received at the end of June. We do have a few people that are still going in and filling this out, but it is, this was earlier summer data. And again, this is data prior to recent spikes that we've been seeing in our community. So this survey was done prior to kind of some shifts in COVID transmissions that we're seeing now in Champaign County. So how comfortable were staff in returning to work in the building, teaching students? So as you can see, based on the colors, green is that somewhat uncomfortable and very uncomfortable. So about forty-four percent of the staff at this time, at the end of June, were either somewhat uncomfortable or uncomfortable. So the next question we posed to staff was, if, what would make you more comfortable returning to in-person instruction? And so this is some, this is the feedback that we received. We listed, you know, several things that people could choose from. There was an option, if you see on the, we didn't put this long line because at this point, it becomes, you know, kind of one person made this comment because they could add things and people could make other suggestions. So basically, I could share this with the board, but it becomes basically a long list of, this is the one thing that somebody said. We had about 315, last I checked, there were about 315 people who responded to the survey. We have about 450 teachers. So some of the things that people said would make them more comfortable, number one, of course, is a vaccine, right? We would all be more comfortable if we were at Phase 5 and had a vaccine and didn't have to worry about this anymore. I know we'd all sleep a little bit better at night, but that isn't something that we have at our disposal right now. So we focused on the other items. Nightly deep cleaning and sanitizing. So we made sure that we incorporated daily cleaning, had really clear protocols for what that would look like. Limiting outside visitors to school. We're going to talk about that here in a second. Wearing masks in school, hand sanitizer stations. We're going to talk about that later in the plan. Limiting the number of students in classes to make sure that we're physically distancing. Temperature checks before entering the building. We have a plan for that. Staggering hours for students. Carol's going to talk a little bit about transportation and the challenges that we'll be facing there whenever we do return to in-person, but that is something that we're committed to doing, is having staggered arrival times and dismissal times. To allow, and shorter time in the building. I know that wasn't one of the things that was on the in-person comfort level list from staff, but it is something that we put into the plan. I know the numbers get a little bit smaller here, but nineteen percent of childcare is something that we've heard from a lot of our staff members around, and not just staff. I think, you know, many of our staff are also parents. And so they are concerned about when I'm teaching in that blended in-person model and my students are Urbana students, and what are they doing, you know, for the two or three days that they're at home remote? So we've heard that. And we tried to develop a plan around that to help support our, not just our families, but our staff. And then eighteen percent, nothing would make them feel more comfortable about being back at school, which is about where our parents are with that 80/20. You know, twenty percent of our families are not, based on the survey data, again, we haven't hit that twenty percent yet for in-person, all in-person, all remote, sorry, requests, but that is, that does kind of mirror what our families were telling us to. So I know there's been other studies out there, and IFT and IEA have done some also surveyed their members around comfort level. So again, this number is a little lower than some of that data that we've seen from our Illinois IEA and IFT. But again, I'm going to qualify that by saying this survey was a little earlier in the summer before we hit the positive transmission, the number increases that we've seen in Champaign County. So questions about that before I go on? I'm going to start now kind of jumping into the different sections of the plan.
Well, this is Peggy. I don't know, is this a good time to ask about how we are accommodating teachers who are unwilling to come back to school?
So we are going to talk about that at the end because that is definitely something, Peggy, that is a concern of ours.
Okay.
So Angie's going to share a little bit about that at the end of the, at the end of the whole presentation, actually.
Okay.
Talk about, you know, because we are going to hit a, we are going to hit a ceiling here at some point where that is going to be a real issue, whether we have enough teachers and also enough subs to cover the in-person instruction, but we are going to talk about that.
Okay, I'll hold off.
Okay. Okay, I'm going to jump into these priorities, and the first one, you know, we've reiterated, and I think our number one goal is to keep everybody safe, and that includes students and staff and anybody who's in our, any of our spaces. And so the ways that we're doing that is we definitely are meeting those social distancing requirements. We have rearranged schedules. We have rearranged lunch. We're, you know, planning, the principals are going to work on scheduling breaks where students are leaving the rooms. And yes, unfortunately, classrooms will look really different, and we're going to show you a picture here later when we get to the facilities section where, you know, we have to take out a lot of those extra things that make classrooms fun and inviting places to be, unfortunately, in order to keep, in order to make safety a priority. We've talked about staggered schedules. We're changing passing times, meal times. We are providing personal protective equipment for our staff, so they will have, whenever we do return to in-person instructions, you know, we're going to talk about this in a minute, but we are starting remotely. But when we do get to the point where it's safe for us to be in person, we have, we'd already purchased face shields for our teachers. Before, there was that big controversy in June. We have, and I've mentioned this, and anybody who's seen the plan has seen that we have a huge group of staff who have been involved in planning. We have two, we have an operations and facilities committee that meets weekly and a remote learning instruction committee that meets every week, as well as additional subcommittees that meet almost every week. And one of the first things that we talked about was PPE. And, you know, a lot of the teachers said, you know, as we heard in the public comment, you know, the younger kids need to see our faces. They need to see our smiles. They need to see us welcoming them into buildings. So we right away purchased face shields. We are going to still provide those to teachers. You know, some teachers may wear their face shield over their mask. We also did purchase masks with the clear cloth masks that have a clear opening. So I know that is something more so that our special ed teachers and especially speech therapists, people like that, really want it, but we thought that would be something for every teacher. So we made sure that every teacher will have a cloth mask with the opening. We've bought a few other little handy tools to help, you know, help staff just be a little safer in the buildings, like these little door openers, you know, so, you know, they're not touching high-touch spaces, high doorknobs and things like that as much. So they'll kind of get their back-to-school kit at some point whenever we return to in-person. We have gowns for nurses and N95 masks for nurses. So I think we, very early on, made a commitment to making sure that we were going to have as much PPE as we thought would be needed. We also have a, I wouldn't say a huge stockpile of disposable masks, but we did buy disposable masks for the, you know, days when students might show up or a staff member, you know, every now and then I get out of the car and forget my mask. And, and so we do have some disposable ones available that every school will have. We are doing symptoms screenings and temperature checks, so we'll talk about that. I'll show, do a little show and tell with one of those for you later. That will happen upon arrival to school and on our yellow buses. We have a plan for isolating, you know, when we have that person who shows up with a temperature check or a student, we have a plan of how we're going to separate them from the rest of the students and keep them safe until someone can come and pick them up. We've had a lot of conversations about air quality. I know that was something that was on the UEA's letter that they sent to us the last meeting. So I'm currently meet almost weekly, just here in the last few weeks, with our UEA president and vice president. And this is something that was a request, and so we've been going through every building. Most of the buildings have the ability to have an open window and have fresh air come through, but there are some inner offices and places that don't have windows. So we're identifying those places, and we will be providing a HEPA filter for those classroom spaces. Oh, I skipped travel requirement. So this was something that we put in place when we entered Phase 4 here at Central Office and for 12-month staff who were working over the summer. So we've all been back in our buildings. The administrators have been in their spaces basically most of the summer. But as we saw transmissions increasing across the state internationally, we did make it very clear to staff what the protocols were if they travel outside of Illinois or travel to a hotspot. So we're implementing those same protocols, and we've shared that with staff who have, now that all of our elementary people are all back, we'll share that with families as well. I mean, we've had a couple of summer programs running this summer at the middle school, at King. I know Neighborhood Connection Center has had students all summer. And we've had students who've gone to Florida and come back and want to come back to school right away, and, you know, and we've not allowed that. So I think what we're going to follow those same travel protocols whenever we enter into in-person learning. And lastly here is the use of outdoor spaces. So that has been something that originally, I'll be really honest and transparent, wasn't part of our plan, but we've talked to board members who heard from some of their constituents. I know there was some discussion about this in the community on social media. So we are exploring the use of outdoor spaces. We're looking at getting commercial tents. We've even looked at a couple of, Randy's looked at some carports. So we're trying to be creative. Some of our buildings, like the high school right now, has tons of shaded space. So, you know, when it's a nice day outside, they don't need a tent because there are a lot of places that they can go and be in the shade. We're cleaning up courtyards. The middle school has some courtyard space that would be great for outdoor classroom. So our facilities people are going to make those spaces a little more viable for that. King has a great outdoor courtyard. So I think there's some places where providing a tent and some shaded space will be easier than others. But we are committed to making sure that every building has at least one tinted or shaded space that they can go and utilize as an outdoor classroom. So this is, we've been working with our attorneys on a lot of, just a lot of the legal, you know, ramifications of some of this. Right now, we are mandating that people in our buildings wear face coverings, and that is everybody. And the governor has shared that. The Restore Illinois Plan says that, IDPH says that. So anybody that's younger than two does not have to wear a mask. Anyone who has health reasons and can show that they can't wear a mask, we're basically saying you need to still have one, and we're going to work with you and try to accommodate what that might look like. So tonight, we're not going to vote on this tonight, but we are asking the board to consider, I'm clicking in here. It's supposed to be a live link. It's going to take a second. This face covering policy, our attorneys shared it with us, and we tweaked it a little bit, and you have this as well. So we'll ask the board to consider this. I'll make it a little bigger. But we won't be voting on it tonight or anything like that, but this would be something that we would ask that you would approve. And again, we'll make reasonable accommodations. You know, we're having some administrator PD here in the next couple of days with our principals, and one of the things that we're going to ask our principals to do is really work with families. Try to do whatever we can for students that are having trouble keeping their masks on, you know, have parent conferences, phone calls, whatever we can do to accommodate, but we are going to still require that everyone wears those masks. So board members, you have this. Once we approve it, then we'll, we don't have a number to it because press will do all of that, but this was something Robyn and Schwartz put together for us, and we're asking you to consider that. Unfortunately, whenever I click in a link, it requires that I have to kind of scroll up. So close your eyes. All right, so visitors, building visitors. So visitors to our buildings must also wear a mask. I know in our plan, we talk about mentors. I'm a CU101 mentor. Many of you also have or have mentored in the past. So I've met with our mentor coordinator, and many of our mentors, about fifty-eight, I want to say, percent of the mentors want to come back whenever we return to in-person. They want to come into the buildings and continue to mentor. So I'm going to work with Tom Howley on what that might look like. There are some that aren't comfortable doing that yet. So we'll make sure that if and whenever we do return to in-person, that we have a plan for our CU101 mentors to be able to Zoom or, you know, students can come out and go to a space where they can get on a computer with their mentee or mentor. So, so that, I don't have that in here, but that isn't our plan. I just, I just wanted to mention it because, you know, it's a priority for me as a mentor to make sure that we provide that safe, safe return to school for our mentees from CU101 as well. So visitors, we do have a, we've been working on self-certification. And again, we've worked with our attorneys to create a form that we're using with visitors and with staff. So this particular link is showing, is going to show us the visitor access. So what will happen? I know we have people who don't all, you know, everybody doesn't have a smartphone, but most people do. So we're going to, at every entrance of every school, have a QR code. You know, as you walk up to the school, you can, you know, use your cell phone, access the self-certification form here. I'll show it to us here. And this is what you will see. And this is basically asking you that before you enter our buildings, you're certifying and verifying that you're COVID-free, that you're not using medication, mask, or hydro symptoms, and that within the last fourteen days, you've not come into close contact with anyone who's tested positive or suspected of having COVID-19. And this is what. And this is what we'll expect everybody who enters our campuses. They'll sign a date it and we'll use this as well for contact tracing, um, for the public health department. Staff will do something very similar. I'll show that to you here in a little bit. And then Angie is going to talk a little bit about contact tracing and, and what we've come up with to help us with that because that is a really important piece of all of this. So I'll click on here, but then Angie's going to take over from here.
Good evening. The human resources team, uh, worked hard on creating a form that would be user-friendly that either, um, a staff member, um, could complete for contact tracing or the supervisor of the staff member could complete. For example, if the staff member was just really, um, sick or just, um, was not very technology savvy. And, uh, we have utilized this, um, this summer, um, for, um, a couple of staff members. So I'll be able to explain how this was able to use in practice and how we were able to be really proactive, um, with this contact tracing. So as it says, it's confidential information for just internal purposes. It's to keep staff members and students safe. And again, it's to be filled out by the supervisor of the staff member or the staff member who's tested positive for COVID nineteen. So, um, you just, you get a link and you hit start and you fill out the contact information below. You'll have to hit in a dot, Jennifer, to be able to go because this is a required field.
Okay.
Your name. You can even just click your name if you want. I'll be able to go back in later and, um, and delete it and you'll hit next. And so, or you can hit the supervisor. You can just hit next since it's not, there's no supervisor. You can put in a telephone number there. We'll see if it accepts the long area code. That'll be interesting. Okay. And so this is just so that we have it readily available so that we don't have to, we can quickly call people so we don't have to look it up. And then it's all right there. Obviously, we would have all this information, um, in our database, but to also have it tracked this way is nice. You'll put your primary work location in. And then the next is really important, a list of symptoms. And the reason why this is so important is because if, when we are contacting other potential people that have, um, been exposed, a lot of times to put people at ease, especially if they tell us that they're asymptomatic, other people really want to know that. We had a case, um, this summer where, um, there was a, a guy that worked in maintenance. His, uh, significant other was an essential worker in the healthcare field. She tested positive. He went to go get tested because she tested positive and he was asymptomatic. And then anybody that had been around him through our contract, uh, contact tracing, we alerted them immediately. Since we were able to be so proactive, we were able to actually contact the employees prior to the health department. So they were contacted twice, but we want to be able to let them know as soon as possible because they're, um, our employees. And we were able to tell them that this particular person was asymptomatic, which, um, sometimes just puts people at ease. But we can also let them know, um, particular symptoms of another person, even though everybody's different. Okay, so the next, um, possible exposure location. And so if you were exposed at work or if you think you were exposed in a classroom to a student or, um, if you were exposed over the weekend, um, at a funeral, um, lots of different things. Okay, so then in the next one, please list all district locations and spaces you have traveled in the last seven days. So here, you have an opportunity and we're going to anonymously notify your contacts to get tested for COVID nineteen. If somebody, um, if the person that has tested positive for COVID nineteen gives us permission to share their name, we are able to do that. Otherwise, it's going to be completely anonymous. And it's happened both ways. And so I've called people where it's been anonymous and I've been able to call people and tell them who was, um, COVID nineteen positive. So on this particular form, um, you can keep on adding more. So you fill in the name, the location, so you could put location, central office. You could put spacer room, um, Angie's office, uh, the date and the time. And you might not know all this information, but we wanted to write as much detailed information as possible. And then you can hit add more and you can keep going back. And if you made a mistake or if you wanted to delete it, you could do that. And then you could write a little note, um, if you'll hit next. If you want to write a little note about it, like, um, you know, I'm really feeling fine. I'm doing the fourteen day quarantine. I'm going to test multiple times. Um, I'll be in touch with you. This is just a nice little area for people to write notes. And then when you hit submit, if you go ahead and hit submit, this submission, um, goes to two people in the human resources department. Um, and we get a nice, um, form sent to us so that we're able to track this. It immediately comes to our email. Um, and then we're, then we're able to immediately contact, um, the people that might have been in contact with a person that was COVID nineteen positive. Again, the health department has so many people, um, that it's nice that we can, we're trying to help them out and be, and stay on top of it to stop the, the spread. And so, um, the couple cases that we've already had of staff members, um, in earlier July, it was, we were very fortunate that neither staff member transferred that to any other staff members or students in our district. And so it was an isolated case and we were able to, um, be proactive. We also have a form where people can, um, self-report that they, um, have been COVID-tested. So for example, if they've been to a state with a spiked, um, spiked COVID presence that they can certify that they have been tested with summer vacations. We've really been piloting that here at central office. So if somebody has went to Tennessee or somebody has went to Arizona or Florida, California, we've had lots of different people that have traveled in airports and they've come back. They've had to quarantine. They've had to, they didn't have to test. We can't force anyone to test. Of course, we recommend it, um, and we can't force anybody to fill out the form. If a staff member refuses to fill out the form, which they can do, we will ask a supervisor to fill it out so that we're able to do that contact, um, tracing so that we're able to keep, um, a good record of what's going on in our district.
Thank you, Angie. So, uh, one of the things that we also have Angie mentioned that we've had, um, one or two of these this summer. So we, we've had to have some conversations about quarantining. And I know this is a big part of the, um, public health plan. And, you know, we, um, a couple of board members and I, we zoomed with Julie Pride. Oh, I don't know. Has that been two weeks maybe? And talked to her about, um, you know, how the public health department is going to monitor these and how they're going to work with us on them. But this has come up a lot in our committee work. You know, just people wanting a really clear, um, because we had all the texts, right? We've written out, you know, step by step, but we wanted people to have a really nice visual of, you know, someone tests positive, this is what happens. And we needed to have a really clear scenario of when people can come back to school or work. And so, um, this is, and these have been approved by, um, as you mentioned, Julie Pride, uh, shared a statement. So our, our plan has been previewed, um, and reviewed by the public health department. These flow charts in particular, um, before we put them in our plan, we wanted to make sure that they have been vetted, um, by public health. I know, um, you guys have been reading a lot about this too, and we have as well. So, you know, our lawyers gave us some scenarios there. Lots of other school districts that have created scenarios. So there were just, you know, the IDPH, Illinois Department of Public Health has put out things. So it was just a lot of information out there. So we wanted to make sure that whatever scenarios we were following were going to be something that our, uh, public health, our local public health department were going to support. So, um, so these have been approved by, um, by CU, um, public health department. So if it, I don't know that I need to walk through them all. I mean, this is a pretty clear visual. You know, if a teacher tests positive, the class will move to remote learning for fourteen days. I mean, that is, that is just automatic. I mean, um, we're going to set that, you know, because we're starting a year remotely, I think that is going to help significantly when we have instances where a class needs to quarantine like right away. We'll be able to put those remote learning, uh, practices in place, hopefully seamlessly. I mean, that would be our, um, hope, um, is that a class would then be able to go into, um, that quarant, you know, into quarantine, but the learning doesn't stop just because they're in quarantine, right? We're going to work with substitutes, you know, a lot of, um, as you guys know, there are a lot of people who have tested positive that are asymptomatic. So if a teacher may test positive but may have no symptoms, so that teacher might be able to still provide activities for the students and still send, um, lessons and still be teaching. But then there'll be cases where teachers won't be able to do that and will need to have a sub there. So we are going to rely on our grade level teams, our, um, teams at the middle school, our departments. In all the conversations that we've been having with staff, we've been talking a lot about collaboration and planning together and, um, just how important it is going to be that especially for remote learning, more than anything, I think it is really going to, uh, push us to, um, collaborate and plan and know what we're sending out, uh, remotely and what we're, what feedback we're giving students. So I think subs are going to need some support, um, from the, the colleagues and other grade levels and other positions, but, um, we're going to all work together to do this. So same thing if a student tests positive, um, close contacts of that student, we'll quarantine. If a student is asymptomatic and tests negative after the fourteen days, then they can return. This scenario here in the middle would be, um, in an instance where we would be doing more than just quarantining a class. We might have to, um, make a decision to, uh, quarantine a building. If there are more than three staff members who test positive in a building or if we have, um, more than one student in different families across multiple grade levels that test positive, then we would close that building, um, and, and have it, that building move to remote instruction. In Julie's comments, she, you know, Anne read that, you know, there are going to be instances. We've had instances already, um, and isolated kinds of things. So the, the goal is to prevent outbreaks and this is one way that we would do that. Our maintenance staff have worked really closely with ESS. ESS is part of our, um, operations team. So they've been involved in all the discussions about cleaning and disinfecting and sanitizing. So we have a plan that when we do have positive cases, and Randy will talk about this a little bit later, but we will close that building and we'll come in and, um, clean everything we need to clean. So these are those scenarios. So questions about priority one, because next we're going to move to student learning and I'm going to turn it over to Kim. So any specific questions about health, safety, PPE? We'll talk about cleaning a little bit more later, so you might have questions about that.
This is Peggy. I know testing, we're not doing testing right now, but that has been on the mind of so many families, teachers. I know you've had some discussions with UIUC on their rapid
Yes.
screening. What is the likelihood that that may be available to us in the coming months?
Yep, so I'm going to talk about that here a little bit in, in student learning, but I, I'll, I'll just do it now because it's a good question. I know it's on everybody's minds. Right now as a district, we don't have the ability to test, um, you know, in, 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 at our health center. I know that has come up as a question, um, from board members and from people in the community. It, logistically, there are just all kinds of reasons why that's just not a good thing. The health center is sending people, um, to Francis Nelson if they need to be tested. The health center can't test adults, just, just children, just students. So, um, and Peggy's right, I have been in conversations with the U of I. And right now, I think we are, um, I feel like they are very, uh, willing and they want to, um, help. In, in, I've been in a couple of meetings now, but one was, uh, directly with Chancellor Jones. And, um, he said, you know, to think that there is this imaginary wall that, um, keeps the students from crossing Green Street and Wright Street is just, is just not, that's just not a reality, right? Our university students are, you know, they go to Target, they go to Walmart, they go to Myers. They are in, you know, they, they are in our community. And so I think that the university has, is, uh, realistic in that, um, they know that this is something that, um, they have a, a really detailed plan. I, I was able to sit in on one of the SHIELD meetings and I am just so impressed with the, um, work around the saliva test and how they're going to manage it and monitor students, um, through the app and all the other, uh, uh, protocols and things that they have in place. But right now, they need, they're waiting on FDA approval, um, Peggy, to get to the, the gist of your question. When the governor was here at, um, the Neighborhood Connection Center, he was asked this exact same question. So he is working with, um, Chancellor Jones and with the university to be able to fast-track that FDA approval. Right now, I think the university has only been approved to provide the SHIELD test internally. So, um, they've not, the FDA approval does not allow them to, um, test outside of the university. So you have to use your ID badge. The only way you get to go through one of the SHIELD sites is through your connection, your affiliation with the University of Illinois. So, um, it, that, I think that is something that will happen, Peggy. I just don't know when. And I know, um, based on the conversations that we, you know, Dr. Zola's been in those spaces as well. You know, I, 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 I don't, they don't have a timeline for us yet. So we're going to talk a little bit about, that's one of the reasons why we're, um, we're going to talk here in a few minutes about starting remotely and staying remotely a little bit longer, with the hope that the university will, you know, they're going to need some time to put those structures in place, right? Like, you know, we have forty-five hundred students and eight hundred staff members. Unit four has ten thousand students and, you know, twice the number of staff members that we have. That's, you know, twenty thousand people now that you're adding to the, um, structures and systems that they have in place for the thousands and thousands of students that they're testing. So, um, I think there is going to be, um, some timing and, and lots of meetings and, you know, lots of discussions about what that might look like, when and if we get to that point. I know I've heard in the couple of meetings that I've been in that the university is, is not just the school districts. They want to work with the communities too. So they want to work with the city of Champaign and the city of Urbana. As they see this as a community effort, not just a University of Illinois effort. So I know I couldn't really answer that, Peggy, and give you a finite answer, but that's the best I could do.
Yeah, no, thank you. So, and did I hear you say we have limited capacity through our health center?
Yeah.
Nurses, so for parents who just can't, you know, get over to other testing sites, we have that capacity.
Well, they are, they are, we've had this discussion and they, they are recommending that students who need to, um, if they can't get to the free site out at Marketplace, you know, there's a free testing site, um, open seven days a week from eight to four out at MarketPally Small. They can go to Francis Nelson as well. Okay?
Thank you.
Yep. All right, so Kim, I'm going to turn it over to our Assistant Superintendent for Student Learning to talk about student learning. So Kim's going to talk about priority two.
Good evening, everyone. We know that, um, difficult times bring difficult decisions and many of our families wanted to review our plan, um, before making a decision if they would be in-person or remote. As Dr. Ivory Tatum said, we have a little less than ten percent, um, of requests that we've received to this point. Um, and we've had, had those trickling in every day and we've been responding to our families. But that's, we have it less than ten percent at this point. All of our families have the opportunity to opt into, um, for in-person. They have that option for that, um, blended learning or remote. We do ask that, and I've had a lot of questions about this, um, that students are registered to participate in our remote learning program. We've also clarified the difference between homeschool and, um, remote learning. So remote, remote learning is utilizing district resources and staff. Our dual-language students, as Dr. Ivory Tatum said, will be starting off remote. So we will start them off in their dual-language classes. Once we become in-person, um, with our current calendar date, that was August thirty-first, then we would offer other resources such as, um, resources in Spanish and French. We would have ORACY tutoring after school. And we would also, um, provide opportunities for our dual-language students to be able to, And we would also um, provide opportunities for our dual-language students to be able to um, be synchronous with their dual-language class on Wednesdays, but they would be assigned to a monolingual teacher if they choose um, remote, once everybody else, excuse me, goes to the um, blended learning. As we mentioned, we'll work closely with the Champaign-Urbana Public Health Department to inform on them immediately. If we'd have a positive or suspected positive case in our school building. Uh, all emergent bilingual students, um, will continue to re- receive support through their designated program. Um, English as a second language or dual language, and again, that's for emergent bilingual students. Uh, we're exploring the use of outdoor spaces whenever possible um, as another measure. Just um, so our teachers can take advantage of that as well. And Mr. Taylor will next talk about special education services.
Yes, uh, thanks, Kim. Uh, so as you can see on the slides, uh, kind of a little bit of a summary from our plan uh, about students who receive special ed services. Uh, uh, as recommended by ISBE, students with disabilities will be prioritized for in-person instruction on days when students are in attendance uh, for, for instruction whenever that's feasible. Uh, and our special education case managers will be contacting parents early in the school year regarding uh, uh, the individual learning plan for collaboration with parents, and, and I'll, I'll talk a little bit more about what those things mean from our plan. Uh, so for those, those parents and families who are not requesting the all-remote option and will be attending in person. Uh, most of our students with individualized education programs will be offered two days of in-person instruction per week when, whenever in-person instruction begins. Uh, for those students with IEPs who are part of some of our more uh, intensive district special education programs, like our life skills programs, cross-categorical programs and instructional programs for students with emotional disabilities. Uh, those families are currently being contacted by program staff regarding individual student and family need. Uh, adjusting schedules that may include offering some days, additional days of instruction for in-person instruction or more customized schedules. Uh, it's possible as we start the school year that we may be able to offer additional days of in-person instruction for students with IEPs who are not part of those more intensive district programs whenever in-person instruction begins. But it, uh, that decision uh, is not going to be made about the, our ability and capacity for that until we have a better idea of who is returning for in-person instruction to our classrooms. And we have a clearer picture of enrollment numbers for in-person instruction, class sizes, and our capacity to safely uh, social distance and, and the sizes of our, 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 uh, our classrooms and our buildings. Uh, as the school year starts, our special ed case managers will be contacting uh, parent guardians to collaborate about updating and amending IEPs and individual remote learning plans that were developed for most of our students with IEPs last spring. Uh, this is a, something that we have to do given some changes in the number of days of instruction, length of the school day, uh, scheduling differences from a more typical school year. A- as well as uh, having to adjust and update those individual remote learning plans for those who are choosing, uh, those families that are choosing a remote option now. And the possibility that at some point, that, that everyone will be on uh, uh, remote learning. So we're trying to prepare for that. So our case managers, uh, special ed staff will be reaching out for that as well. I wanna emphasize that parents will be a part of that process uh, to make sure that individual family and child circumstances are taken into consideration as these plans are developed and updated. And as well as our students, our, our, our five oh four case managers for our students that have five oh four plans uh, will also be reaching out to parents and guardians uh, as, as the school year begins to collaborate for any needed updates or adjustments uh, to five oh four plans early in the, in the school year. So, so the name of the game for us at the beginning of the school year is uh, collaboration, working together as professionals and working with families.
Okay. And again, just a reminder, um, we are extending um, those remote learning requests. Those um, requests can come in until August fourteenth.
So next, we're gonna talk about the calendar a little bit. I know this is on everybody's minds, and I've already kind of alluded to this a little bit um, through other questions. So right now, these are the board-approved start dates, uh, with the exception of we've got a sixth grade day planned in there, um, for the middle schoolers and a ninth grade day. Uh, but right now, the majority of our students, um, we, this was, you know, we just did this a couple of weeks ago, but we're, we're gonna talk to you here about changing it a little bit. Um, so right now, this is, you know, I get emails, multiple emails every day about, um, you know, when are the students going to, you know, when is their first day of in-person if, if we get there. So right now, this is what we um, asked the board to approve. Um, our plan shares, and Kim's gonna talk a little bit about these times, so I'm not gonna really belabor that a little bit, but I do wanna say um, we are, Carol's gonna talk about transportation because um, while um, this is the plan that we have right now, as we continue to move through the transportation requests, we have a survey out there, that, it, it may change. Um, so we, we're just kinda putting that qualifier on everything right now in terms of timing. Um, so next, we wanna kinda have a conversation about phasing back a little bit and slowing down a little bit. Um, we've heard a lot about monitor, the positive trans- uh, missions in our county as well as in Urbana. Um, I have a spreadsheet that I could show you, but you probably don't wanna see it, where um, you know, I'm kinda trying to keep track of those daily and weekly numbers in, not just in Champaign County, but also in Urbana. Um, and I know we've heard from our teachers and our families, um, many of you saw the video that, um, yes, we are kind of in the middle of a little spike here, um, that we do not want to uh, move into in-person too quickly. Um, while we're in the middle of this, this little spike that we're in. Um, I know the News Gazette just shared even today that, um, just to give you guys the numbers. So right now, in six one eight oh two, which is our higher um, bracket in terms of numbers, there's twenty-six active cases day on seven from Monday. Um, and in six one eight oh one, we have twelve active cases up to from Monday. So these, you know, we've had, we had a day here not too long ago, you heard about in the public comment that we reached the highest that we've ever had in our area. Um, and that does give me pause, and it is troubling to our team and, and I know to our staff. So, um, that's the, that's that first bullet there. And then secondly, Peggy already alluded to this. Um, I'm encouraged at the, the, the chant, the fact that we might have an opportunity to um, really partner with the University of Illinois in, in shield testing. I have heard from multiple mo- I can't even begin to name the number of parents or staff members who have, who have um, reached out and basically said that in terms of you know, being able to sleep at night and just their peace of mind, if people, if we had the ability to test, um, it would just make a huge difference, I think, to everyone, to families, to teachers, to staff, to us. Um, and so I think, you know, be, slowing down a little bit, um, finding out if the university is, you know, I, again, I, I do not wanna sit here and say I have any idea of when we might be able to do that. I don't wanna put any misinformation out in the community because the, the University of Illinois, they have been very clear that while, yes, this is a goal, they have no idea when it will happen. And so, um, so right now, I think right, we're recommending that, um, the Board of Education uh, partnered with us on, on a new kinda slower phase in of the remote learning. We would start with remote learning. Um, which was already our plan, uh, but that we would extend that and um, and, and look at these two factors um, at, at around that Labor Day holiday, if we're still seeing those um, increased positive transmissions, that we would come back to the board and have another conversation about, um, you know, what, what would we decide to do? Um, and, and again, as we get updates from the U of I, um, I'm hoping that Dr. Zola and I are continued um, in, invited back continually to be part of these conversations about shield. Um, and, and hopefully, you know, we would be able in the next couple of weeks to come back here and have, you know, on September fifteenth and say, or September first and say, you know, this is gonna happen and we've got a plan, but I, I just don't know that right now. And so I think I wanna have more of a, um, a, a reassurance that we would have an ability to test. Because right now, we, we don't have an ability on our own as a, just, you know, just a, you know, a smaller district. We don't have that capacity to test all of our people on a daily basis, or even to test everybody before we would be able to invite everyone in for in-person. So we need the University of Illinois to work with us on this. Um, so again, I'm looking at numbers. Um, we had this discussion in the committee and, um, I think there, you know, I'm gonna be really honest and transparent. There are, you know, voices on our committee who really want us to say, you know, we're going to um, stay out the whole first quarter. Or we're not gonna come back, well, maybe not the whole first quarter. I know, I, I've heard that from parents, but, you know, maybe October first. We don't come back, we just say that now, so parents can plan. Um, they know what they're doing for childcare, they know what, where their kids are going and what they're doing. I guess I'm just not ready yet to push this out that far. Um, only because I just wanna continue to monitor these numbers, and I, I, I don't wanna miss out on an opportunity to be able to have our students um, safely, I'm gonna say that multiple times, safely in our schools to get some in-person learning. I know people have said to me, what is so, why is this so important? Well, it's important because, um, we know that there are some of our students who did not engage in the spring uh, remote learning at all. Um, it is gonna be extremely difficult for some of our students to engage in remote learning um, at the start of this school year. I mean, we have had those conversations in our committees, and I think our teachers understand that, our administrators understand that. We're starting a brand-new school year. You know, when you start the first day of school, you wanna know who, who your teacher is, what they look like, what they sound like, where they, you know, pick them out of a crowd, and a lot of our students won't have that relationship. They won't have that connection. Um, and so it is going to be extremely difficult to, to do that. I know, um, Laura Corritz, you know, she's emailed me and she, and you heard her statement tonight where she says she's gonna work her butt off. Every single one of our teachers, they're gonna work their butts off to engage their kids, to get to know them. But it is gonna be hard to do that remotely. I'm just gonna be really honest. And we know that there are a group of kid, there are a group of our students who, it's just not gonna happen for them. Um, and, and again, we have to lay different expectations around, um, what remote learning is now and how different it is from what we did in the spring. Our parents were adamant about this. Um, and I think that is not just the people who wanted to have, uh, go full remote. All of our parents have said, if we're gonna do this, it just needs to be different and it needs to be better. We agree, um, our staff agrees. And so, uh, we, we are coming up every day with new ideas of what we're gonna do with this whole remote piece. Um, we're gonna offer more, and we're gonna talk about this too, more synchronous opportunities, more opportunities for live instruction, more teaching via remote. Um, but I think we need to be realistic in this space that, um, there are some of our students that if we don't get them back in school at some point in person, the loss of instruction may not be something that they come back from. I mean, they've already lost three months at the end of the year, not to mention the summer loss that we see in a lot of our students every summer. Um, so the longer we stay remote, and I'm circling back to this, sorry, got on my soapbox a little bit there. But the longer we stay full remote, the, you know, just the more chances there will be for us to uh, lose some of our students who are gonna disengage with learning. So that is just a priority for us. Um, I'm concerned if we put these dates, like saying, the whole first quarter or the whole month of October, you know, what if things change for us? And what if we're in, um, you know, mid-September, we're in a different position where we back, we go back down to those lower numbers? I wanna capitalize on that and say, let's get kids in school, even if it's for two or three weeks or a month. Because we know when influenza season comes and flu season is here, we are going to be remote. It's just not even, it's, it's, I, I mean, the universities are closing at Thanksgiving and sending kids home. Um, Governor Pritzker has said to us, Dr. Carmen Ayala from ISBE has said, you need to plan to be able to go remote at any point. Um, and, and we know that by the time we hit that, that winter flu season, we will be remote. So we wanna make sure that we have an opportunity to, um, um, have kids if we can, and if we can do it safely. I think we have a safe plan. But again, um, so, long story short, we want to uh, make a new recommendation that the board consider changing our calendar once again. I'm really sorry, parents. I know, uh, this is something that, um, a lot of, I know we hear a lot about going full remote from um, certain groups, but we also hear, I hear from parents who, um, just need to know what the plan is gonna be, so they can plan for work and they can plan for childcare and things like that. So right now, we are proposing that we would be monitoring this, um, looking at this information and through Labor Day, then come back to the board with a um, decision of whether we stay remote or whether we go in person. So we don't have to make a decision about that right now. I'm sure we'll get feedback from our community here in the next few days. Um, and so I encourage people to let us know, and I'm sure you will be reaching out to your board members to let them know what you think about that. Any questions about this? Yep.
Jennifer, can you just clarify that what you're saying here is that the proposal of the administration and the committee is for school to be delayed to start Tuesday, September eighth, and that everyone will be remote at that time? Is that?
Yes.
That's what you're saying here?
Yes. Thank you, Tori. So yes, we would stay remote up until this point. And based on the number of tran- positive transmissions of, you know, I'm, again, monitoring that as on a daily basis. If we're still in a situation where we're spiking, we may be staying remote after that September eighth. I know that propose, uh, presents a hardship for people who need to plan and need to know, um, you know, further out than that, but I don't have a crystal ball, and none of you guys do either. You know, I didn't expect to get this spike that we're in right now. Um, and so I, I just, I, I can't, I can't predict where we'll be in a couple of weeks. But, um, yes, so that is basically what we're saying here.
So I just wanna clarify that, that, that would be the new school start date, and that everyone would be remote learning at that point. And that from there, from there, that monitoring and back-and-forth communication and um, conversations with all stakeholders would be happening, um, before anything else or different would be done.
Right. So I know one of the resolutions that we had on the um, agenda for tonight does kinda give me the flexibility as superintendent, not just me, but the designees and the administrative team here to be able to work with public health, um, to uh, have a little, you know, I know we only meet every two weeks, so it's hard to be able to put things on hold sometimes, um, and wait until we have a board member to ha- a board meeting to have conversations with you guys. Cause uh, there will be times where we have to make some of those, um, hard decisions about, um, things. And so that resolution also would be even for this in-person versus staying remote, um, conversation. So we would loop you guys in and, um, you know, share as much as we can with the board, but that um, that would be driven more so by our positive COVID cases in the county and in Urbana.
Okay, tha- thanks. I just wanted to make sure that was clarified for everybody that's listening, that they got that understanding that, that this proposal is no longer looking at starting at the end of August, but starting September eighth and everybody being remote until we otherwise make another decision.
Yes. So the bl- so ba- basically what would happen is if, if everything went back down and we, you know, we, we kind of uh, reached this nice, um, low number again, then this would be the date where we would start that blended hybrid model. That we would invite kids in in-person. If our positive transmissions are low again, and hopefully we would be having, um, more information from the University of Illinois about when we might be able to participate in the shield testing.
We would be remote until September eighth. I think Tori misunderstood that.
Yeah, I, I'm confused too. So what, what day would we, what, what day would we start remote learning?
Yes, thank you. Sorry about that. So remote learning will, we will start remote and stay remote until, um, after this date. So we've already changed the calendar a little bit where, um, initially in-person was supposed to start Monday, August thirty-first. Um, we added a couple of the remote learning planning days at the beginning of the year to give teachers some time to get in and do some planning and PD. So in-person would be starting around this time if our positive transmission numbers were lower again. Does that, did I explain it better that way, that time?
So when, when does school start? Does school start in this proposal? Does school still start August thirty-first as, as we previously approved with all remote, or does school start the September eighth day?
So we're saying So we're saying we would like to push back the Au- August thirty-first and say now our new in-person date would be September eighth.
But instruction starts the twenty-fourth for everybody. Remote learning days and the twentieth and twenty-first and remote learning starts the twenty-fourth.
Yes, so we're talking in-person starts, yes. So first day of school starts August twenty-fourth for everybody. In-person uh is what we're talking about here. So no matter what, we're gonna be sending remote learning activities to everybody. So there'll be synchronous activities, there'll be um videos that students will ha, get, the teachers will be having office hours, all kinds of um remote things that we will be able to count those activities as actual student attendance day, starting August twenty-fourth. Does that make more? Paul, does that?
August twenty-fourth is the first day of school. Tuesday, September eighth would be the first day for in-person instruction.
And at this, this proposal starts in-person instruction for everybody on September eighth.
Yep. Thank you. That is exactly it. We'll clarify that when we send out the next eh uh communication as well, so people know that. Any other questions about that or why we're proposing that? I hope that's pretty clear. And again, I know there are people who are gonna want us to have a really hard, fast date right now, but um I think we just have to keep, keep watching what's happening in our county and watching what's happening in our community.
So this, this September, I just wanna make sure I'm clear and that others listening are clear. This September eighth day, is this a revisit date? I mean, this, this is, this is when you'd like for the cases to be down and for individuals to be able to go to in-person, but there's a good chance that's that the, that the science and the data is not gonna support that.
Right.
So we're not being asked to vote on this Tuesday, September eighth being your going back to school day, but more so that this would be when we're revisiting and being at the science and data and working with public health to determine whether or not tha- that is appropriate. Is that, am I understanding that part right?
Absolutely, and so I think we'll change this slide before we make it public and make that a little more clear. So yes, that's exactly what we're saying, Tori.
Okay. So August twenty-fourth, all remote learning, a revisit after Labor Day to determine whether we continue all remote learning or whether we look at the in-person.
Absolutely, that's it.
Got it. Hope everyone else got it.
Yes, thank you. And if not, send me an email or send Ms. Norton and I an email, we will clarify for you. Okay, we ready to move on? I don't wanna, I wanna make sure that's clear. Okay, Kim is gonna talk a little bit about, I know people have heard about the A B schedule. So we just wanna make sure that that is um very clear to people, so Kim.
Okay, so as we um look at in-person, we have grouped students into um Schedule A or Schedule B. A through K would follow um the A schedule and L through Z would follow the B schedule. So it is by student last name. But this is um kinda complicated, but we're working with our administrators um on one spreadsheet. And because we, if if there's siblings and siblings have different last names, we wanna group families together. And we've had several families that have reached out to us and have made that request as well. Um we've also uh made some changes just on student needs that we've had to um place them on a different day as well. So we have um the A and B schedule. The secondary um administrators have already looked through this, elementary principals just came back this week. And they are looking at this list now that um secondary um administrators have had an opportunity to so they can make sure siblings are on the same day, so. And then that'll be shared with our student as well, so we can plan transportation.
And Kim, I'm gonna add one thing. We have gotten some questions about why we didn't go with Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. Um and one of the main, I mean, I I guess there are a couple really good reasons, um you know, instructionally uh we just feel like i- it's better for new instruction. You know, when we were in remote learning this spring, there was very new, very little new information being presented to students. Um and so we feel like this Monday, Thursday model provides an opportunity for teachers to be able to introduce new content, which we will have to do now and we will have to increase that rigor. So um you know, we're, we're foreseeing this as especially at the um pre-K through eighth grade levels, you know, we can present new content, new skills, new, you know, um new standards and then give students a couple of days at home with that information and review and give them feedback. So when they come back on Thursday, then we can present something else new. We, we don't have to spend these whole weeks of not being able to uh predict, you know, we'll never get through our curriculum if we're not able to pro- to um to introduce some new content here um in in more of a really thoughtful way. The other reason, oh, go ahead, Kim.
Oh, I was just gonna add is um we've also had parents ask us, you know, for um sanitation purposes and the assumption was that we're only sanitizing on Wednesdays, so that's being done throughout um all day and in the evenings. Um and Randy will detail that further with elec- electrostatic sprayers, some other um mechanisms that we're taking or additional custodians. But I just wanted to clarify that too, because I think some families felt that we were not in-person on Wednesdays just to allow for cleaning on that day, but that's being done throughout.
And the other reason we went with the Monday, Thursday is, and this is more of a middle school, high school consideration, is that's just a long time not to have some face-to-face when we are able to be back in person. You know, if students know they're only coming to school on Monday and Tuesday and they won't see an adult face-to-face um in-person for, you know, almost a week, that just, that will just lend itself for um more disengagement and more um feeling uh disconnected. And so we thought breaking that time up um in the week where they, you know, they have a little face-to-face at the beginning of the week and then at the end of the week um would lend itself to keeping our high schoolers especially connected to learning, so. Okay, Kim?
Okay, so we'll look at the early childhood schedule. Um you'll see that for Urbana Early Childhood Center, there's um an A M and a P M. And so it's about two hours each. And then King follows the regular, the preschool follows the regular elementary schedule. Um remote um for um early childhood, what that would mean for on Wednesdays would be things like pre-recorded videos, um could be synchronous lessons, um could be virtual calls, choice boards, puzzles, um gross mo- motor activities. We know that that would look different for early childhood and we wouldn't want um large, large amounts of screen time. And so we would be working with families and it wouldn't be, um since we're a half-day program, it wouldn't be a solid two and a half hours of synchronous instruction. Things would look different for early childhood. Um what the day would look like would be, I'm just go just a little bit, Jennifer. Just wanted just to show a little bit of the day there, um with arrival and dismissal being fifteen minutes, whole group ten. Um centers for small group would be forty and gross motor would be forty, so that's the bulk of the time. Early childhood center would provide a snack, but then um lunch would not um and breakfast would not be at the Urbana Early Childhood Center. Then at King for preschool, um that arrival and dismissal is just a little bit longer, fifteen minutes. Um a hundred minutes for um centers and small group, sixty minutes for gross motor. And then they will have um lunch and breakfast for forty-five minutes and then rest and quiet centers for forty-five minutes. Now, the one thing that I wanna point out as we move from the elementary to the middle school to the high school schedule on our remote day Wednesdays, um from our parent surveys, um one thing that was shared was we couldn't have um different grade levels on at the same time. So we have staggered that, so elementary would be eight-thirty to eleven. Um we'd have middle school, or high school would be ten-thirty to one and middle school would be twelve-thirty to three. So that we didn't have students on synchronous instruction at the same time. So for elementary, we do have twenty to thirty minutes for breakfast and morning work. We've incorporated morning meeting, which is an S E L approach, and we will embed S E L throughout the day. We'll have forty-five to sixty minutes of math instruction, twenty minutes of um electives. And we still will incorporate P E with masks and then thirty minutes for lunch and lunch will be in classrooms. And then thirty to forty-five minutes of writing instruction. For the U M S schedule, um teachers will move two students, so students will still have um four classes, they'll have four and they'll have an elective, but the difference is um teachers will go to the student classrooms. And um for students that choose the remote option, and I talked to Dr. Weimel about this, and he really, and his staff is all on board to really facilitate, um it's like they're, they're going through their day, it's just not in the building. And so they will have contact with their teachers, there'll be synchronous and asynchronous instruction. And then you will also have a remote teacher liaison that provides support and to check on them. So really, really proud of our teachers for um the supports that they're putting in place for our students that um are remote and in-person. Excuse me, take a drink here. For U H S, um the difference is that teachers will not travel to the students. Will have half of their schedule that they'll go through one day and then the other half the other day. Um that they still will pass in the hallways, will just have staggered, um students will stagger out, so it's not all at once. And then we will also incorporate spacing in the hallways. And then the other thing to mention, we've had a lot of questions about A P. So again, our high school staff wants to keep their students on their rosters and continue to support their A P students and um through synchronous instruction on Wednesdays. And then also by providing them with um all the materials and everything as well online.
And that, Kim's talking specifically about the all-remote students, so we've got a lot of questions about the um the students who are, who are making their families that are choo- choosing to stay all-remote for all kinds of different reasons. Um that those students will still have access to A P, they'll still have access to their teachers. Um you know, we're working out the details, it, it, you know, as I I explained to a parent yesterday, it's hard for us to make these kind of um you know, sweeping, building-wide decisions in the summertime when we don't have everybody here. You know, we've got these, these committees doing a lot of the work and they're, they're having the discussions, but um now that it's August, we have more, more of our teachers are coming back, they're engaging, we're able to have uh bigger meetings, we're able to get more buy-in and input. Um and so at the middle school and high school level, as, as we've um recaptured some of some people now ready to, you know, it's August, so people are ready to get back and they're used to kinda hitting the ground running right now. Um we're able to have those more, I think, um more in-depth conversations about what that full remote is going to look like for kids. I know that's the next slide, but I think that is the area where I felt, I feel like um we have taken a lot of criticism and I'm gonna be really honest about that and we just, we just didn't have all the answers to be able to share um this soon and 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 much sooner than right now, um because there were a lot of just logistical things that we've got to figure out. I know Peggy asked about, you know, the, the teachers that um are not gonna be able to return to school um because of medical reasons and things like that. So that plays a part in this as well. I mean, um you know, we've been asking people to uh let us know what their plans are, but until we have a firmer idea of who's here, who will be here in person or who will not be able to be um that, that was kind of playing a part in um what we were able to be able to share with people about what the all-remote learning uh piece will look like. But we've been able to have some more in-depth conversations with the high school and middle school, um where again, it, it just has to look different there, right? Like, you know, most of you on the board have had kids at the high school. I have a high schooler, you know, eh oh, there are always certain people who can teach some of those classes, you know, not any teacher can teach A P statistics. You know, Mr. Dutton can teach that and we can't say, you know, we've got five students who are all-remote who um now can we give them to somebody else to be in A P statistics? That's just not gonna work. So um I think the high school understands that, they wanna do what's best for kids um and families and um and for the learning. And so I think they're working out those details. So we hope really soon um that we can get, we can answer every single one of those questions about A P and about those specific course content things that people wanna know about um specifically for middle school and high school. Um and you know, we'll be able to share that with you guys in a, in a more qualitative way very soon, so. We appreciate your patience and we have, we are taking the feedback, we're hearing you. Um but again, we needed to give our teachers um more time to, just, just to figure out what that is going to look like, so.
So remote learning is a full-time commitment. We're asking our families um to commit for a duration of a semester. It's two and a half hours of synchronous instruction and then also we have to account for five hours that day. So that, that other time is asynchronous, it doesn't have to be live, um it's responses, it's discussion boards, um other activities that can account for those remaining two and a half hours. One thing that we heard from our, our families in the surveys too, that when we did this previously, that there was a lot of confusion with sign-ins and when they had to sign into a lot of different things. So um we, our student learning team has been working really hard and are looking at Clever. So there would be one mechanism for, for uh students to sign in and that would connect them to other um online resources. So we're excited about that. Um and then elementary students, we're gonna, as I mentioned earlier, would start each morning with a morning meeting and then secondary students will sign into the portal um to begin their first scheduled class of the day. And I just wanna mention here that S E L piece, morning meeting, you may be wondering what that's about. S E L, we're embedding that um throughout the day for all of our schools, all levels. So we, we recognize and um and Linda Givens will talk about that more in full, but um just the importance of S E L. So for core classes, students will participate either in whole or small group. And um it can occur through Zoom, as I mentioned, discussion boards, webcam, conference calls. Interaction with the teacher is key. So the uh state superintendent really talked about synchronous instruction and and having that two and a half hours per day, but we can look at that through, it's the teacher interaction, that back and forth and that accountability piece, that's really so important. And things still look much different than they did when we were thrown into this in the spring. Um because now is, as we transition, grades and report cards will resume. So we're, you're gonna hear us talking a lot about interaction and feedback. So as Dr. Ivory Kaye said, even when we chose our in-person time, that's why we spread out the days. We've got to have some time for that instruction, for students to have an opportunity to delve into the work and then to get that feedback. A asynchronous is providing students um with electives or dual-language work asynchronous instruction by signing into Clever. They can engra- engage in programs through our learning links, we'll continue to have resources available there. Google Classroom, we have purchased things like little sponges uh for pre-K, K and then multiple languages for French and Spanish and Brain Pop will be available in French and Spanish as well to support our learners further. And as we think about our day, students um will have opportunities at the end of the day to also connect with their teacher. They can do that by posing questions via email, Google Classroom, Remind, or scheduled office hours with their teacher.
Were you done with this one? Cause I wanna mention something about athletics here.
Oh, no, you go right ahead, yes.
So I've gotten a lot of emails from some of our families um who are uh interested in the full-remote um option about athletics. So I have um had conversations with our athletic director and as um assistant principal, Mr. Waller at the high school and uh Dr. Weimel at the middle school. And you know, we really are bound by I H S A, um you know, the Illinois High School Association. And, you know, we really are bound by IHSA, um you know, the Illinois High School Association and IESA, the Illinois Elementary, um the middle school kind of, you know, um uh comparison to IHSA for middle school. Um, and they have recently put out new guidance. Um, so I know that was not in the plan um when it was made available, but it is now. Um, so as of August third, the um, there are some lower-risk uh sports uh for fall and the higher-risk or medium-risk sports have all been moved out. So um at UMS, golf, softball, baseball, cross-country, which are in the lower-risk category, will start August third. Um, at the high school, cross-country girls tennis, girls swim, dive, and golf um will be fall sports. Um, in the new plan, that should be available on the website tonight, uh there's a link to what that's going to look like at the high school. Um, we are allowing any student that is all-remote to participate in sports. Um, you know, I know they may not be comfortable coming to, into the school, but um a lot of the sports will happen outside, so that may help um, you know, with, with families' comfort level. But again, that is a family decision, we're not going to, you know, in, in, get involved in that. But we did want to make that something that the um, the students who are all-remote will have the opportunity to, to still participate in those lower-risk sports at the middle school and at the high school. Also, this is me too. So um a- as, as we talked about earlier in one of the uh survey slides, we've been hearing a lot from not just people on our committee about what our, what our family is going to do for childcare, but what our staff is going to do for childcare. So um we, I, you know, I got the clearance from ISBE to uh move forward with looking at um using some of our grant funding to um explore this off-campus learning site model. Um, I reached out to Park District and they were, right away, I know they're having a board meeting tonight too, they're probably done by now, but um they were looking at a um, you know, a beginning intergovernmental agreement with the school district. They were right away willing to uh partner with us. Um, they're not going to be offering a lot of their fall programming, so they have spaces, right? Where we can, we can uh recapture some space for learning for our students when they're um not ex, not in school for their two days um on their blended schedule. And again, this is all, um, the, this would only happen when we go in-person. So while we're, while we are staying remote, we would not be sending students to the off-campus learning sites. So if and when, and whenever we return or whenever we're able to invite students in for um in-person learning, um is when we would start these off-campus learning sites. Um, this will be an opportunity for families to have a safe, uh controlled learning environment. We are going to run these sites, um just like we are our, our classrooms. They're going to be sanitized, they're going to be in set groups, their kids won't be intermixing. Um, they will be with the same group, you know, if you're on the Monday-Thursday schedule, when you go to Stone Creek on Tuesday and Friday, you're going to be with the same, you know, ten or twelve kids that you were with when you were there on Tuesday, you're going to be with those same kids on Friday. So um I think when we shared this model with, with ISBE, you know, they applauded us in that we were trying to do our part as a district to help mitigate the spread of the virus. Because I can tell you, and I don't know if you guys are, are, are around or hearing about it, but there are a lot of centers and, and spaces in our community that are not following the rules as strictly as we are. Um, you know, around, you know, the number of students that are allowed to be together and how they're together. You know, we're, we're, we're following that, this is the number of kids that you can have per fifty square feet of any space. Um, when we went over and previewed all of these spaces, we asked everybody walking us through, how many square feet are in this room? Because then that tells us how many students we can put in that room. Um, Neighborhood Connection Center is going to offer a couple of spaces, and Stone Creek Church has been a great partner. Um, as you guys know, they have been partnering with us around the food and um providing groceries. And um they've been part of the See You Better Together initiative, and they, they have just been such a friend to Urbana School District. Um, when I approached them about joining us in this effort, they immediately said, we will do whatever we can to help our kids be safe. Um, and so we're just really thrilled that we have people in our community who are willing to bring our kids in. Um, and, and again, the purpose, this is not childcare. This is another opportunity for students when they, um, because our, you know, we have families that need to work. And so um on the two days that students uh would not be in their blended or in-person days, they could go to these sites and we, we will have Chromebooks, district Chromebooks at these sites. Um, we'll be utilizing the Wi-Fi in these places. Um, so students will have an opportunity to link in and log in with their teachers and have adults available to help them with their work. Um, because we know a lot of parents won't be able to do that because they'll be working. Um, these programs won't, these sites won't be open on Wednesday, um because we want to encourage our students um to, we're, we're going to be running the after-school program on Wednesdays at the elementary sites. Um, so that is a space that people could sign up for. Um, and we, we will come into these spaces and just like we're cleaning everything, we'll, we'll be doing daily cleaning in these spaces. Um, we're hiring more custodians, so we'll have the ability to send somebody over and clean the restrooms and clean after the students leave every day at one. Um, but then we would use our Wednesday to do a deep clean here. Uh, we'll feed kids at the sites, I know we don't have that all worked out yet, but um that is, that is what we're going to do. We're going to have an application process, right now there's already a survey out. Um, I haven't checked the survey today, but when I checked it yesterday, we were up to about nineties, ninety-plus people who have signed up um and, and want to take, and, you know, advantage of this opportunity, and it is going to be extremely low cost um for, for our, you know, for our staff and our, our, our families who take advantage of it. Um, and we will not be allowing drop-ins. I mean, we are really serious about that, that there is going to be an application. And if you say you're going to be there on Monday and Thursday, you're not going to be able to drop in at some other day or, you know, change. You're going to be, we're going to be asking people to make a commitment because that's how we're going to keep the group safe. Um, and that is, I think, most, oh, parents will have to provide their own transportation. Unfortunately, we have our own transportation issues that we're dealing with, so I know that is going to be a burden on some people. Um, but we're hoping, you know, we, we strategically chose these sites uh because of the connection that some families already have. And, and the, we, we're hoping that, you know, students will be able, um if parents don't have a car, a parent can walk them in. Um, I don't have it here, but we will be also same procedures that we follow in our um, in our schools. We will have designated doors that people go to. They will also have a temperature check and a symptom screening. And um we're not having parents just drop off kids, kids won't be able to walk to these sites alone. Um, when they show up, we're expecting them to be with an adult because we're going to ask the adult those same COVID, like, those same questions about symptom, um symptoms. And um, and we'll screen them for a temperature check before they enter the site for the day.
Jennifer, I was going to say, I really appreciate, like you said, how all of these places are strategically placed throughout Urbana. So it covers quite a bit of Urbana, which I think is great. And I know the MTD goes to many of these places also. So I'm hoping that adults could get their children there, I think this is a, going to be a great resource for our families, thank you.
Yeah, and I hadn't even thought about MTD, right? You're right, Brenda, yeah, it is, it, they all pretty much are on bus lines. And we were thinking, you know, Anita Purvis um is close to Ivanhoe, so that would be somewhere that we would really kind of promote um for the um, the Ivanhoe families can get to this site with, you know, if they don't have transportation. Phillips is a, would be a great place for, we have um a couple of spaces at Phillips for King and for um Lille and Brookins, uh we're, we're envisioning uh Dr. Williams, students can take advantage of the Brookings site, Thomas Payne. Um, Neighborhood Connection Center, they already have such a huge following of kids already who go there already, who would, you know, that's just going to be a natural place for them to, to go because they're already involved with Ms. Mitchell's program. And then Stone Creek um has a huge congregation, our, our Congolese, a lot of our Congolese families who are um at the, in the French Dual Language Program at Yankee Ridge are members there. So that will be a really uh familiar place for them to be. Um, we have started some, you know, um talking, we, I haven't had a chance to go out, I know I've got to get over, I've been busy, really busy. But Vineyard um has reached out and is interested. I know they're um doing something with the, the YMCA for champagne, but um they've also reached out when they heard that we were doing this. Um, and, and so I haven't had a chance to go over and walk that, that space yet. Uh, but Vineyard might be another potential site coming, so we'll, we'll have to keep working on that, but yep.
Uh, Jennifer, um, I don't need you to answer these right now because I know that we're getting really, we're cutting into time, but a couple of questions about these, most of these places at Park District. I know that the Park District is bringing back some of their um, their classes, their fitness classes. So is this going to interfere with the comings and goings in those buildings with our kids being there? Um, and two, um, and you can answer these at a later time, too. Um, will there be any sort of hotspot usage of this place or other places for the day, for families who don't have internet connectivity? I know you just said that Wednesdays, these, these places will be closed, but that's the second question. And third, is this going to be open to all age groups? Or is it just, I mean, like, will the early childhood kids be able to come here as well as high school kids and everybody in between or?
Yeah, good question. So this is K-5, I'm, I think we're, we're kind of envisioning high school kids don't need, you know, they don't need that.
Sorry, it says right there, you're right, K-5.
K-5, um, and you're right about the fitness classes, but at every single one of these sites, they, they are offering us a dedicated entrance. So we have a space, a p- parents can pull up, we get our own door to go in and out, so we won't be mixing with the community or with the public. Um, we'll have our own entrance, our own exit, uh food deliveries would be made at our own, you know, our space. So that was something that we were really clear that we, we don't want to have our kids mixing with the general public. So you're right, they aren't, that is something that we've talked about with, well, with everybody, um with Park District and, and Stone Creek too, um, so. Okay. And then, oh, yeah.
Can I just ask, before we move on from remote learning, I want to make sure I heard, it sounds like the, the deadline for application has been extended to August fourteenth. Because I, I know you said you've only heard from fewer than ten percent who've indicated an interest in that option, but several parents have said they haven't sent theirs in because they haven't had their answers, their questions answered about specifics around scheduling.
Sure.
Sounds like those questions may get answered in the next week about, you know, what can happen in their class schedule so that they can complete that.
Yes, yes, and I think, you know, we thought August seventh, we'd have all those, have, have enough of that part figured out to be able to give parents those answers, but um, so we realized we need a little more time for that. So we've extended it to August fourteenth. We'd, we'd like people to, um hopefully as we get more information out in the next few days, to make that decision. So we can, um, we can make sure the students are in the right places and connected with the right adults and with the right, on the right class list prior to, you know, that first week the teachers come back. Because that week that they're back, this um, August seventeenth through the twenty-first is going to be a really intense planning week. So we really want them to have a, you know, we want staff to have a good idea of how many kids um are going to be all-remote who might still be on their classroom list or who we might have to hook up with a, um, in, into a different pot or cohort. So um, I, you know, and August fourteenth is probably not going to be a final deadline either, but as many people who can let us know by then, it will significantly help um the teachers being able to plan for um the start of the school year all-remote for those kids.
All right, great, thank you.
Yep.
Well, sorry, one last question.
Yeah.
How are we, what metrics are we going to be collecting to measure the effectiveness of remote learning? I mean, even for in-person learning, right, that's at best forty percent in-person. So lots of our students are going to be doing remote learning, although they're all doing remote learning. So how do we, how are we measuring that we're really reaching kids? I, I mean, that's, that's one of the things I want to look at, but making the decision about potentially delaying the, the start of in-person instruction is, is, is how effective is the, is the remote learning being at the start of the year? So how, how are we measuring that?
Well, that synchronous piece is really going to make a difference. The expectations are changing quite a bit. So I mean, their teach, students are expected to be engaged with their teacher through multiple mechanisms. And then there's the reporting piece, I, I mean, let's be honest, when, and we just didn't know things would go on for so long, but when the original guidance came out last time, the two words, no harm, is what really, um, I mean, many students became disengaged or they didn't see, you know, they thought that they did enough to a certain point and then they just stopped. Um, or they didn't feel that maybe necessarily that they needed to connect with their teacher, they would just do the work and maybe they missed out on part of it. So there's accountability for everybody throughout this. Um, lots of resources that will be, it's going to be very transparent instruction, what, what will be shared um when it's remote. And so um that's, that's going to make a real difference. I mean, when you do not get any feedback, and I'm not saying that our teachers didn't because we had teachers going above and beyond, um but that feedback, that accountability piece really makes a difference and just connecting with students. Um, that's, that's going to change things tremendously.
And ISB has increased expectations too, Paul. Um, you know, this spring, everybody was present, you were counted in school regardless of whether you cracked your Chrome, Chromebook at all, whether you did any activities, you were counted as in attendance. Um, and, and we don't have that flexibility and we shouldn't have that, you know, it, it shouldn't be that way going into this. So um on this screen where we've got the five hours of daily instruction and that two-point-five hours of um the synchronous piece, ISB is going to be looking at that. When we, when we go in every day and take attendance, um, you know, we won't be able to count a student present if they've not en- engaged in any of the activities that the teachers are making available to them. Um, and, and as Kim has said, that feedback piece is critical. So tomorrow is, Wednesday is when we have our um remote learning instruction uh committee meeting. And that's the focus of the whole meeting tomorrow is just talking about, how are we going to have that back-and-forth interaction remotely? You know, what is that going to look like? It can't just be Zoom office hours. You know, how are we going to present some material and then get that feedback and have that interaction um through multiple different ways? And that's how we're going to be able to, to count engagement, um that, that, we're going to use that to be able to say if a student is in attendance or they're not. Um, and, and I, and I know that's unfortunate because, you know, that's why I think we're pushing the in-person learning because we know, like you said, there are going to be a lot of students who remotely are just, it's, it is going to be super difficult to get them to engage in some of these activities, synchronous or asynchronous. Um, but um, but so, yeah, so you're right, I think that, that is a, that is a rigor piece that um we've had a lot of discussions about and is, is just going to require more collaboration and, and more PD. I know we haven't really even talked about PD for the teachers, but um, and resources for families. So we have um our um, kind of our remote learning tech people have been putting together tutorials and screencasts and, and videos that we're going to start sending out to families so they can prepare for what remote is going to look like. Um, as, and, and, and prepare for the psychological and shift of it is going to be different. Um, you know, and, and it's going to look different for the kids this time around, um helping them understand that change and expectation, so. But yeah, good question.
Jennifer, just mention, oh, I'm sorry. Um, can you, can you, do, do your thought, but just, can you, can you mention the um devices? The device availability as well as um connectivity? I have a little concern just on the um ability of some stu- students to be able to meet the requirement of being synchronous. And even in my own household, I'll just give you my own example and where, you know, what I consider fairly privileged. Um, my husband and I both work from home. I have a soon-to-be college student who was a high school senior that was in school as well as uh at that time a ninth grader. And we struggled with the ability for us to all be online at the same time. I mean, there were times where I would actually have to tell a teacher, hey, Amari's not going to be able to be on when you want her to be on because work for me is more important. Um, and I don't even have the ability to increase my speed at my house, that's, that's the most my neighborhood offers. And, you know, it is what it is for me. So, you know, I kind of am a little concerned in that respect. You know, obviously, we want kids to be engaged, but we also want to make sure that, you know, when it's not possible that, you know, there are, that, that there are some exceptions that are made. And then that, you know, the families that need the additional devices, I know that we have those, but I want that to be mentioned that um what's available as far as devices and, and how that connectivity piece is going to be handled for those who just simply don't have it.
Kimmy, you want to take it or you want me to?
Yeah, we're going to, we will do another Chromebook distribution again. Yeah, we're going to, we will do another Chromebook distribution again and looking at devices that our students have. So kindergarten will turn in iPads and then they will have an opportunity to get Chromebooks, so with the earliest of ages. And then for families that need another device, we will have that available. For families that haven't, we've had our liaisons over the summer connecting with families to see if they didn't have internet access and what we could do to support them there or connecting them with Comcast. Those are some of the ways that we just want to make sure that we can get our families connected.
So Tori, we're doing, August eleventh and twelfth are the next two Chromebook distribution days. And we're, we're going to be, it might be on the website already, but that is going to be going out in a Skylark glass. I've already had, every time I send something out, I at least have one parent who emails me and says, hey, we, I have three kids and, you know, it was really hard with one or two Chromebooks. And so we're going to make sure those families that have multiple students get a multiple, another device. But as Kim mentioned earlier, Tori, the synchronous part was really tough because we had kids, you know, like, you know, I have two kids in my house and they both needed to be on Zoom at nine thirty. And, and like you said, we, we had two devices, so one could get on and the other, but a lot of families can't do that. So we're going to try to make sure those synchronous times don't butt up against each other. So I think that's one way we're going to solve that. But we're also, as, as Kim mentioned, we did, I mean, like a lot of, I mean, our liaisons called, I don't know how many families, checking in about getting them signed up for the free Comcast. But for the families that we didn't get to, we're hoping to be able to provide some Wi-Fi hotspots. So we just, I know MC, who was in our meeting earlier tonight, wrote a grant and he's working with a couple of other outside groups to get, to get additional Wi-Fi hotspots for families. So I don't know if that would help in like, you know, a family that is in your situation with the bandwidth, if, if putting a Wi-Fi hotspot would help in that situation. But I know in a family that has nothing, a Wi-Fi hotspot would make a huge difference. So, so I think that is something that we're looking forward to. We're not going to be able to utilize the Wi-Fi busing. I know we talked a lot about that in the spring, but unfortunately, our bus routes, you know, we, we have a contract with First Student that requires us, we only can run so many routes based on, you know, what we pay for that contract. And, you know, so once we run them all day long, back and forth with these small bus routes and because we're limiting the number of kids, we're going to, we're going to max out on that and not be able to have the buses like after school to be able to go and park them places for people to be able to use them. I know we, we haven't really talked about after school and that is something, I know Linda is going to be on here in a second. But, you know, Linda Gibbons, we have the Twenty-First Century Grants and we have those at multiple sites. And so we don't have that all figured out yet, but we're hoping that we can utilize the Twenty-First Century and the Splash to be able to give students another place where maybe they don't go home on certain days. Maybe they're able to stay at Splash and do, you know, get some help with their work and utilize our Wi-Fi at the same time, so. Did that answer your question, Tori?
Yeah, I mean, more so, I just want to make sure that there's not a penalizing of a child that, that is in, that that's, you know, relayed pretty heavily to teachers that, you know, a child who can't get online when a teacher needs them to should not be penalized and marked absent and have repercussions when, you know, they just, they don't have an option.
No, you're absolutely right. I agree, yep. Okay, we're going to move here to get through. We still got quite a few more slides. So Linda, Linda, you still there? I know she didn't expect to be here.
Good evening, everyone. You know, if I were really doing SEL tonight, we would get up and do some kind of an energizer activity or something right now. This is tough, but let me just run through the SEL information because I do believe it's really important for us. Jennifer, you'll have to just kind of guess where I am because I didn't necessarily follow exactly the slides. So tonight I'll talk, I'll be talking about priority number three, social and emotional learning. This is not a new term for the Urbana School District. We have been implementing social and emotional learning for approximately fifteen years since the social and emotional learning standards first came out. So, but here we are, we're in 2020 and SEL has taken on a new importance for us. COVID nineteen has made a real impact on the lives of our students, their families and our staff. As we've heard tonight, people are feeling really anxious and stressed. I mean, I heard words like terrified and scared. We know returning to school or being remote will look very different for the way school, you know, the way we left school in March. Because of this, you know, we have really talked, focused, spent considerable time on social and emotional learning since school was out in March. So social and emotional learning helps to provide a foundation for safe and positive learning and enhances our students' abilities to build relationships, be aware of feelings and express themselves. So as we move back to the learning environment and, or if we are remote, back and forth, social and emotional learning is critical, crucial for supporting our students. We're looking at many different ways to connect with our students, whether they're in person or remote. And hopefully that will allow us to get feedback from them so that we can, at least some of our students, we know where they're at, what type of help they might need and support. And, and even the, the technology piece, the Wi-Fi piece, it's going to be critical to just find out, you know, as far, far as Wi-Fi, are they connecting? Do they have it? You know, if they're not connecting, we can follow up on that. Food sources, we can ask them about food. We can check in with them in all kinds of different ways. So we are really building time throughout the day. That our, our hope is to build time throughout the day to connect and discuss with our students. You know, what's been going on with them, where they are, and then to help provide support on more individualized basis if, when and where students need it. So a couple of ways that we will be bringing new information and improving our, our communication with our staff and families is through our leadership teams in the district. We spent a lot of time in the last couple of months talking about social and emotional learning. We had thirty-three, over thirty-three staff attend a thirty-six hour training and certification in social and emotional learning. So these staff bring a really, a new level of knowledge and leadership to our district. And we're really proud of the amount of time that they put into this. We also have formed a social and emotional learning leadership committee to guide and, and help us make SEL recommendations. So the committee is made up of sixteen very talented staff members in our district. This group is primarily teachers, but also we have an SEA, a student interventionist and several social workers on the group. And they will really help us monitor how well we're doing with our SEL implementation. Dan Webster started a district SEL parent committee. They're giving her great feedback on what kind of support they need with their students and how we can support them at home. And then we, every school has a school improvement team and an SEL goal that we will be working on, reviewing, revising throughout our school year. And then finally, our district directors in professional development, bilingual programs, special education. They are all supporting and addressing SEL with our staff and with our students. So we are really working on improving communication to connect with our students. We know that that was a downfall in the spring. And so we have talked about many ways that we can check in with our students daily, whether we're in person or if we're remote. At the older level, the high school students will most likely be using some kind of a device to check in. It's going to be a wellness temperature check. And then depending on what their responses are, we can also provide additional school support staff. We're formalizing multi-tiered systems, ways to can, to support professionals to connect with our students. And we're asking our principals to connect with our students in a daily morning message. So SEL instruction will continue at our elementary, in our elementary classrooms using those resources that you've heard about in the past, morning meetings, second step. And then we're taking special notice of what our students have gone through since March. And we want to really engage students in conversations about COVID nineteen, racial justice and some of, you know, the racial issues that are going on in our community and across the country. So in each of our buildings, it will be necessary to teach new COVID expectations about social distancing, wearing face masks. We practiced some of this during our summer transition program for our sixth graders this summer. We got their feedback. We heard from them what was easy, what was hard. And actually, they were so excited to be together again and to socialize and interact. You know, the face masks were really not as big of a deal as we, we expected it would be. So at our secondary buildings, we will continue social and emotional learning training, which was started last year. They're using the CASL techniques and the five social emotional learning competencies. So they'll continue that to strengthen that support and continue to strengthen their support systems for all of their students with their, you know, SIs, SEAs, clinical professionals. They'll be working to really strengthen those systems. And so finally, our schools will really utilize our professional support personnel in our buildings. We have a few new ones. All of our schools are well-staffed in the areas of mental health support for our students. So school-based teams in each building will identify and provide a range of supports. An increased availability of resources will be available to check in with students. As I mentioned, we might be using some apps that we practiced also during summer transition at the high school level. We, we, we are continuing to partner with some of the mental health agencies in the community. Hope Springs is our partner. They are expanding their services to our students. And they will be seeing students via telehealth methods. And we are looking to create some new partnerships in the community too. So for staff, I'll just close with talking about our staff. We know that these are really difficult times and social emotional learning applies to all of us too. So we are going to be doing different levels of work with our staff. We might be doing some buddy programs, some professional learning communities to increase comfort with SEL. And addition, in addition, we'll be sharing community resources, self-care information, information about our employee assistance program and how to access resources in the community for our staff. So I appreciate all the work that everyone has done in this area. I think it's a good thing. And, you know, whether we have this COVID going on or not, to strengthen SEL for our students and our staff is really important. Thanks.
Questions for Linda? Thank you, Linda. That was really good.
Thank you, Linda.
Thank you.
Yeah, and thanks to the committee. I know I'm going to thank the committee later too, but they've been really jumping in there.
They are.
All right, priority four is operations. So we're going to talk a little bit about cleaning. And I know Randy's here and this is kind of his area. I know this, this is right from one of the FAQs that we sent out, so you guys have all seen this. Hopefully, all of our parents have seen this. But Randy, I know the hour is late, so do you want to just kind of summarize this a little bit? And we don't have to click on all the, all of these are, you know, when we, when we put this out, all of these are links, but all of these links are also in the document, in the plan. So anybody can click on these. So, let me see, Randy? I hope he didn't get kicked out. Sometimes he's.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, oh.
Okay.
Okay.
So I'll just, we won't open up the links, but I'll just touch on each one. The first link is our sanitizing and disinfecting protocol. And this is going to be for the classrooms, the restrooms, hallways, admin offices, secretary's offices, the larger areas such as the gyms and cafeterias. This is going to help us establish and schedule a routine for performing the ongoing cleaning, cleaning of like sinks, stairwells, toilet handles, desks, chairs, countertops, door handles, et cetera. And it's also going to let everybody know how often we plan on cleaning these areas. One thing that Kim had mentioned a little bit earlier in one of the slides was our, how often we're going to clean and what we're going to clean with. The Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, when the kids are in the building, we plan on using the sanitizers and disinfectants. Wednesday, we're going to have as a, just a soap and water day. We're going to go through and clean everything in the classrooms with just soap and water. And that's going to help get the buildup, the sticky buildup off of the tables, desk chairs. And that's going to help stop the, it's not going to give the virus a place to grow if we keep the stickiness off of the flat surfaces. Next link on there is our restroom maintenance log. And that's just like what you'd see in a restaurant on the back of the door. This is just going to give the kids and the parents of staff, hopefully it'll ease the mind that everything is getting cleaned when they can walk in there and see that we have the date and time, initials of who cleaned. And that, that'll be everything in the, in the restrooms from soap dispensers, paper towels, toilet paper dispensers, sinks and urinals and toilets. The last link on there is the enhanced disinfection. This plan was put together with the guidelines from the CDC, IDPH, and also helped with Paul Taylor from ESS, our cleaning contractor. This is a step-by-step process to determine our cleanup protocol and details. And goes everything from checking the facilities to determine the protocol and details of the case, contacting HR to notify all USD employees involved in the situation, allowing the impacted areas to rest for twenty-four hours. Meeting with the building principal, assistant principal or secretary, determining areas where infected to determine any other areas that need to be cleaned. Like, like the hallways, other than classroom, like hallways, restrooms, anywhere else the teacher may have gone. And then preparing the tools that we're going to need, such as a, just a handheld sprayer, electric static sprayer, then what disinfectants we're going to use. Then our general cleaning tools. And then just goes on to tell you how to, how we're going to begin the process and then our cleanup. Those are the three links that are on there. And I think of the hand sanitizers, we have hand sanitizers in every classroom. And they're the touchless type. And we'll also be putting as many as we can out throughout the hallways. So they'll be readily available for everything, everybody. The next part is our classroom sizes and space. This week we started to help the teachers move their classrooms, packing up anything extra they're not going to need and just get down to the bare minimum. And then trying to get the classroom spaces down to accommodate for physical and social distancing. And so far, it seems to be going pretty well, going down two buildings so far, but we haven't had too many complaints. So, any questions?
All right, thanks for Andy.
I do shade ideas, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead, Paul.
A couple of things is, you know, in, in, in measuring the classrooms, it's not just square footage, right? It's, it's, it's being able to make sure you can ensure six feet of separation between desks in the room. So, I mean, did you have to go room by room in every single building and try to?
Yes.
Find out how that, how that all worked?
Yeah, each room is a little bit different. We are doing the six-foot spacing. And that's why we're having to get rid of a lot of extra stuff in the classrooms, like the bookcases, any extra furniture and books that they might not be needing. books that they might not be needing right away. We're putting, we're storing everything so that's all accessible for the teachers. And we have maps in place so a teacher can go right to where they need to, to pick up any, maybe to swap out different lesson plans. But yeah, each each room's a little bit different and it is six foot. That answered your question.
Oh, it did, it does. I guess the other bit, and this this kind of covers a whole night, so maybe it's not the appropriate time to ask this. But we're more than a pre-K through 12 district. We have an adult ed program. So I was wondering how how all this applies applies to them. So I mean, maybe it's not a question to be answered now, but but I'm certainly interested in hearing.
So we we are working with adult ed. I know they're, they've, they're limiting the number of classrooms that they're going to use. I think, I want to say she's only had four rooms. Is that right? I think, so they are, in order to socially and physically distance to, they're not only using certain spaces. We've been working with them on some of the cleaning things and providing sanitizer. And so we're, you know, we're really supporting them. They have their own spray electrostatic sprayer. And so, but we are going to help, you know, they don't always have the resources, not just the manpower resources, but the financial resources to be able to buy everything they need. So we are helping them with things like gloves and sanitizer and, you know, making sure that they have what they need to sanitize and clean as well. But if I can, I have that information from Shawna and I should have put it in here, but I think they're they're scaling back a little bit on the number of classrooms to be able to do the exact same thing. Just use the classrooms that they can spread out and socially distance in, and I think they're just using four. Yep. Okay. All right, Carol, food service.
Okay, real quickly, food service is an important part of our student's day as well, so we want to make sure that they have a breakfast and a lunch every day, especially even on those days where they may not be in person, but they're at home. We want to make sure that they can take home something so they'll have for their remote days as well. So unfortunately, Illinois State Board Guidance is not allowing, they're recommending we don't allow food products to be brought in from home. So any students that have allergies, special accommodations they need, we will accommodate those, but they need to contact the food service department to do that. But really, before the, now that we've extended the remote learning days, we are planning on having our curbside meal pickup again to start that up when school starts, so that we will have that available on the days when we are fully remote at the beginning, so that we will have food available for families to come by and pick up as they did over the summer months. Once in-person learning begins, what we're planning on doing at the elementary level is having breakfast in the classroom, just like they always do, so that's no change. But we're working on a hot lunch, also being delivered to the classroom at the elementary level. For the middle school and high school, they are going to be bag, basically having bagged breakfast that'll be available on carts when they walk into the entrance. They will grab it and go to their classroom to eat in the classroom. And then at the middle school, lunch will be delivered to the classrooms as well, hot lunch. And at the high school, since they get out earlier, they're gonna be grabbing a bagged lunch as they go from the high school every day. So for the kids that are the AB, the remote days, those that are attending school on their scheduled day will have the option too of taking home a bagged meal for those days, because the next two days, they're not gonna be there. So we're trying to work that out. That's where the logistics will get a little difficult, where some of these kids might be going to our remote sites, at the park district sites. We have to figure out which ones will be taking lunches home because they're gonna be at home for the next two days versus at one of our remote learning sites, off-campus learning sites. So that's one of the challenges we have with that, but we are working on, you know, getting all those registrations together, so we know what kids are gonna be where, so we can make sure that they get the lunches they need. And for those full-time kids that are fully, I mean, kids that are fully remote all five days, we will also have an option for the parents to be able to pick up meals for all five days for those kids to take home if they need to. Any question on food service?
Hey, Carol. Oh, go ahead, Paul.
Does the no bringing in food rule also apply to staff?
I would, well, I don't know. I would guess not, because they're keeping theirs in their own refrigerators and it's not mixing with other people's. So I would think staff would be okay. It's when students bring it in, you know, we don't have a way of keeping, we don't want to mix the lunch boxes together with other kids. Again, that just, you know, bringing things from home a lot is probably not a good idea. I think staff would be fine, just as long as they keep it in their own, they have a way of keeping it cold. With kids, we don't want to, we don't want to be responsible, having to put something, you know, refrigerate things and and get them. We don't want to be responsible for keeping things at temperature, so that's, that's where it gets a little more difficult for kids. So that's probably why ISBE is recommending, just from a sanitation standpoint, not to be bringing that stuff in from home.
Hey, Carol, I was gonna say, did you want to mention that we are our drive-in sites right now and that we're gonna be starting those back up again on August 19th? Did you already say that on August 19th?
I didn't use a date yet, but because we're, I mean, we're saying, we're hoping it's gonna be August 19th. But yeah, the, I said, prior to the first in-person learning day, we are gonna have our curbside meal pickup start back up again. Maybe we're trying to do it at all of our school sites, but we'll, once we know exactly how many we can do, we will at least do the minimum like we did over the summer at our sites. But hopefully, we can do them in all the schools. But we will get that information outlets available.
I have a couple of questions that actually this discussion made me think of retroactively. First off, maybe silly, old, before, pre-COVID, there was off-campus lunch for juniors and seniors. I'm assuming that's completely gone away and they they have to stay put. And that means there's gonna be something alternatively, right, in their schedule for when they might have had that. Or their lunch hours, you know, were split in half or whatever. And then second of all, food service made me think of a question for for Randy or for anybody is, what are we doing about drinking fountains? Because I was thinking of the high school and how the cafeteria has those really awesome touchless water bottle fill-up things. But they, we don't have those at the grade schools, but little kids gotta drink water, you know, so what's, have we gotten any offers from anybody for that?
I'll take it, Jennifer.
Yep.
We have, I have a grant that's being approved by Delta Dental. I've been talking to him. I'm pretty sure we're gonna get it. They're gonna give us and install one bottle filler in every elementary school. And then after those are installed, we will install one additional one. So we'll have two in every elementary school. And then if Delta Dental, we have some at the high school and middle school already. If they have extras left over, that they will install another one in the high school and middle school for us.
That's great. I mean, I, it made me think, because I sat in on an ISBE Zoom meeting last week with people about their opening plans throughout the state. And there was one school board member who, from Northern Illinois, I think it was, who said that they got something from their dent, their insurance provider for free, or that they did a grant. And I was hoping that we'd be able to qualify for the same thing. So I'm glad to hear it, because especially with the hot weather and if kids are gonna be doing any sort of remote learning, they're gonna be thirsty. So thank you.
And all the water, the water fountains have been disabled.
I was just gonna say that, yeah, we've turned them all off.
They're shut off or backed off.
And in the plan, and I I just want to say this out loud, so parents here too, we we are encouraging, we're allowing and encouraging water bottles. So, you know, I know a lot of kids have their own water bottles. So if they want to fill them up at home at least and bring them with them every day, then they would have those. But then we'll have the bottle fillers as well. And Anne, for your question about grab and go, so at the high school, it is all grab and go. So we'll have the meals right there at the door and they don't, they won't have the opportunity because of the early release to have off-campus. So, oh yeah, so I just was gonna throw that back up. Okay.
With that Delta grant, they are also gonna issue one water bottle per student at each school.
That's right. I do have a question about lunches.
Yep.
All lunches are gonna be done in a classroom. You were just discussing about not bringing in food from home, but you're separating out the teachers. Are the teacher, the teachers have to have, have to have their lunches in the classrooms to keep an eye on the students. They're not gonna be going out to a lounge to have a separate lunch. So teachers would need to bring their own lunches to the classroom and they have to make sure that they are not bringing something into the room that one of the students might have an allergy to, especially peanut allergies, where someone could get sick even being yards away from it because of the way it can carry in the air. So I, you see my little dilemma that I'm, that's going on in my head about that?
Yeah, go ahead, Carol.
I was just gonna say, we will definitely have to talk to, we, we hadn't, I hadn't actually thought about it until she just proposed that question. So, but we are gonna allow teachers lunch, they have a lunch in prep period after the kids have dismissed. So they won't be eating with the kids during their lunchtime. They will be eating after the children have already left for the day.
Aha, but.
And some might. I mean, I think at the elementary level, because it is gonna be such a later dismissal, some of the teachers may choose to eat their lunch in the room when the kids are eating their lunch. So I think it'll just, you know, we kind of do monitor the allergies, Tammy Dean and the nurses. They work with, you know, we, we keep that information in Skyward, so we know what the allergies are. And we, especially the peanut allergies, we make sure everybody knows the peanut allergies and the peanut-free zones. And so, so yeah, we'll have to make sure Carol's right, that teachers that do choose to eat their lunch in the room with the kids, you know, know who, they can't bring a peanut butter and jelly sandwich in a room where one of their students might be allergic. So, yeah.
Right. And there are other foods that give off certain things into the air as well that bother someone.
Yep.
Also, each family's gonna have to be proactive in in letting the school know those things also. Thank you.
Yeah, we will, yeah. Transportation, Carol.
Transportation, the other big challenge. All families right now, we are, our biggest challenge is getting families to register. We know that now that we've split between the A and B schedules, we're gonna have half the kids on one day and half on the other. And of those halves, not all of them are gonna want to ride a bus. So we're trying to find out for those students that are eligible, that live over a mile and a half from school, we want them to register. And we've had a survey out of the last couple of weeks. We've got about 584 responses as of today. And that's really required. We're making families, we want families to know that they have to register in order to get transportation. It's not gonna be an automatic, if your kid shows up at a stop, you're gonna get picked up. Because we really have to make sure that we have room on the buses and to make sure that we can physically distance those kids as much as possible. ISBE is allowing 50 kids per bus. We don't want to go to 50 kids per bus. We are hoping one student per seat on a yellow bus, which would be about 24 kids. 23 plus a monitor possibly. So we really want to make sure that these families get registered, so we can start routing these buses and see what the actual ridership's gonna be on each one. We are gonna require that the parent, that the students wear a face mask. We will do temp checks before they board the bus. The monitors will be performing those. That's one of our challenges right now, is we have about 37 or 33 routes. And we have about 21 monitors. We don't have a monitor on every bus. So we are gonna see if some of our TAs can provide that in the mornings by riding the bus and starting the school day a little bit earlier and taking care of that temperature check. So that when kids arrive at school, we can stagger those arrival times, so that not all the kids are getting off the bus at once and coming into the school at once. We'll have one bus at a time and they'll know that those kids on the bus have already been temp checked, so that will make the kids be able to go straight to the classroom. And not have to, you know, slow down and get temp checked again before they go into the building. We are gonna load the kids back to front, alternating, so that we can kind of, as they come in, you load the first kid at the back of the bus, the next kid that gets on at the front of the bus. So that we're kind of filling towards the middle, so that they are, again, physically distanced as long as possible. So that only for the last few pickups where we have kids actually completely filled to the middle of the bus, just to provide that extra, extra distancing. Let's see, we are gonna have to tell families that once they register to either opt in or opt out of transportation, that will be their decision for the semester, that they won't be able to change their mind. Just because, again, we want to make sure that we have room for everybody that we've promised to ride to. And we're also not gonna be doing any field trips for as long as we're in phase four. So lots more information about disinfecting and, like I said, we're staggering the arrivals and dismissal again, to make sure that we're not having so many kids entering and exiting at the same time, just to help with that physically distancing. And then also, we're gonna be having windows open on the buses to provide some more ventilation. Disinfecting, you know, the high-touch areas as much as possible between routes. Obviously, major disinfecting will will happen at the end of the day, every day. But the drivers, as much as possible, will try to do those handrails and things between routes, so that we can make sure that we keep that disinfecting and sanitizing as much as possible. Any questions about transportation?
Sure. What about the scenario where a family moves but within the district? So that, you know, they might not need transportation for, and then, and then have it out, need it out.
Yeah, they, yeah, they would obviously have the the opportunity to opt in when they first arrive. But once they make that decision, that decision is permanent, at least for that semester, once they're there. And then they can change for the second semester. But they would have the option, as soon as they come, we would, we would find out what their, what their requirement was, if they were over a mile and a half, if they want transportation, we would, we would do that. They're really getting everybody registered. That's gonna be the key to making sure that we can do all this. And like Dr. Abby Tatum said, there's gonna possibly be some adjustment in times. But until we know how many kids we have and whether we're gonna be able to do all that in one bus run, first student is is working diligently, trying to, as though these, these numbers are coming in, to make sure that we can start routing these kids and seeing how many kids that we have on a bus. But we think we can do it with the 24. We're limited to the number of buses we have too, so that's kind of, you know, it's, we don't have extra buses. Little bit of flexibility, but some of those buses are there for mechanical breakdowns, so we can't really be using all of our extra buses for routes. So that's the, kind of the limitations we have with transportation.
Other questions? Okay, I'm gonna do this one really quickly. I know this is Angie's kind of talking a little bit about staff. But Angie and I are the COVID-19 contacts for the Public Health Department. So, you know, they wanted a number of people, you know, they can call us on weekends, they can call us at night. As, as we have people who test positive and want, you know, this is primarily more so when we're in in-person instruction, not right now as as much remotely. But as we have people who, once our schools and teachers and kids are in in buildings, Angie and I will be kind of that direct link to the Champaign Urbana Public Health Department. I'm not gonna click on this, because we we saw the visitor screening. But the staff self, unless you guys really want me to, the staff screening is gonna look exact, very similar, except they have to do a little more checking boxes to really certify that they are, and they will have to do this every day. So, you know, visitors will just do it when they arrive to the school. But staff will be expected to self-certify every day that they're free of symptoms. And we're gonna start doing it here at Central Office. They're gonna do it at the, you know, at the shop in in at the warehouse. So we will kind of expect, once the teachers come back, that all of us are keeping each other safe by self-certifying that we're COVID-free of symptoms when we come to work every day. Angie, you want to talk about the self-care things a little bit, or?
Sure. Dr. Abby Tatum will talk a little bit later about our two committees that have been working hard this summer. And so we have members on the operation committee and on Dr. Abby Tatum's committee that are really concerned about providing outlets for staff self-care and staff, you know, mental health supports. And so. staff self-care and staff, you know, mental health supports, and so um, we wanna make sure that our staff um, you know, has an outlet to relieve their stress and be able to support them, and so um, through this process, we have links in here, um, and I send out frequent emails too with the information of the Employee Assistance Program. It's something that we, as a district, pay for, for our insurance, that it's um, kind of telecom, telecounseling, so staff members can call in and get free counseling for um, just uh, mental health support. Um, it, financial support, any sort of um, support that they need through tough times. Um, also with um, different insurance, because of COVID, um, a lot of our uh, mental health providers in um, in the area, if, if uh, if there's a COVID nineteen um, kind of diagnosis, not, not testing positive, but if your stress is due to COVID nineteen, um, usually there's not a copay associated, associated with the, the mental health um, counseling session, so that's something that we really share with staff, you know, in a private matter, if, if people need some additional support, and so we have some um, mental health um, professionals within our districts that are also working on those types of supports for our staff members.
Comments, questions? Okay, so this next one um, is pretty self-explanatory, this is another one of those flow charts that um, I shared with um, the Public Health Department, um, again, the loo- our lawyers, Robinson Schwartz had their own version, there are all kinds of versions of this floating out there, so I really basically, um, we, you know, our committees have said, we need to know this, very clear cut, so we came up with, again, something that we thought people could really understand around, um, if you test positive, you know, this is how long you have to stay home, if you have symptoms, this is what you do, if you didn't have symptoms, this is what you do. Um, and, and we shared this again with Public Health Department, I'm not gonna kinda walk everybody through it, cuz it, I mean, I, I, I feel like it is pretty self-explanatory, we've talked about it a lot at the team level, um, of making sure that we're doing our part to track this, Angie showed you the contact tracing that we're doing. Um, and, and we also have some forms that our lawyers um, work with us on, that when we do have positive cases, we have a uh, FERPA, um, you know, private form that we can share with people to say there has been a private case in, in your child's classroom, or um, and so we will put all those things in place too, for when we return to in-person learning if and when that happens. So I know board members, you guys have seen this probably already, but if you have questions about it, it is in the plan. So anybody watching, I know it's late, um, but it's there, if you have questions about the flow chart, um, just feel free to email us, but it is a link in the document as well. Wish, I don't wanna go through that too fast, but I kinda feel like we've talked about that a little bit already. So this again is gonna be a really short one, um, again, as you guys saw, you know, I'm really trying to work collaboratively with the Public Health Department, um, you know, to really utilize their resources for contact tracing and, and co- in combination with ours. Um, we are going to be assigned a school COVID liaison who will work directly with our district. Um, and, you know, and this will be a collaboration in, in terms of um, sharing information and uh, working together to make sure that we're in, we're, we're contacting any and all people who um, who may have been in contact during an infectious period. Um, and a close contact is defined by Public Health Department as being within six feet for fifteen minutes or more. So um, you know, just passing somebody is not, you know, not considered a close contact, um, so there, you know, she's, when Julie Pride talks about this, she's really clear about that time factor of uh, what is considered a close contact and what is not, so in the document, it is not all on the slide, but in the document, um, you know, we're very clearly going to um, use our forms and use our ability to contact people. Um, you know, our lawyers have said, when people are positive, we, we can't just share people's names, you know, like, this is the, you know, this person tested positive, so we have to be very careful about um, what we share and how we share it, unless we have the person's permission, like Angie said earlier, to say that um, you know, some teachers may want the fam- want, want families to know that the teacher tested positive, and then others may not, so I think we're gonna have to just be very careful about those um, those rules about sharing information, but also um, making sure that we're being transparent with families, um, when we do put families in quarantine and if we want them to get tested. But again, all of that is um, this is only, you know, mostly in play when we're in, in-person learning, so, starting remote, um, you know, we hopefully won't have to be using this scenario as much. Um, and again, like, I love the way Julie Pride said in her communication to us earlier, you know, yes, the, we, there're gonna be instances of people testing positive, but our goal is to just make sure that we don't have outbreaks go through the district. Um, and, 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 you know, nobody wants to have to have COVID nineteen touch them in any way, um, but I think, you know, having several conversations with her now, I feel, you know, there, it, it is just, um, you know, people go to the grocery store, they, you know, kids go to playgrounds, they, you know, they go and do other things, and I know there are a lot of people who have sheltered and aren't doing that, but there are a lot of people who are out in the community more and, and doing more um, things, and so that, that just is gonna, we're just gonna see more instances of uh, positive cases just because of that and uh, uh, alone, so um, we're just wanting to be very prepared for it, whether we're in-person or not. You know, we're all coming to work every day, so maintenance, grounds, I mean, they're, you know, we're, we're pretty much essential, we have to be here whether the kids are in-person or not. So all of these um, all of these flow charts and all of these things, there's still protocols that we have, we'll have to, you know, our administrators are here, our secretary is here. So these custodians, you know, these are things that we will have to do, whether the kids are remote, and however long they're remote, we will still have to follow all of these um, guidelines for um, when we have positive COVID cases. So this, you've seen, I've shared this multiple times, so I'm not gonna, you know, walk through it, but I, hopefully, anybody watching, or whoever watches this on YouTube, this is a typical day for a student. Um, I know this is focused on learning at school, um, when we get to that point, but we wanted people to know that we really were thoughtful about how we're socially distancing and physically distancing during the school day for our kiddos, once they're in person. And then this slide, you've already seen, um, and we're gonna do our very best to get that full remote um, information out to families within the next uh, week or so, specifically related to middle school and high school, and those, um, those really um, specific course content areas that families have been asking us out a lot about. So, that is it, I know, we did a lot of the talking, you guys did a lot of listening, so what are some of your other questions?
This is, this is, thank you, I guess I'd kind of come back to maybe a question we might have started with, which is um, cuz I, I believe the next time we'll come together, the board will be asked to approve this back-to-school plan, and the biggest question in my mind is, are, are, you know, we know there's a number of teachers who are opposed to it in its current form. And my biggest, biggest question I come back to is, do we have enough support from our?
Oh, yeah.
Players to make it work?
Yes, thank you Peggy for looping back to that, so Angie's gonna talk about that a little bit.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a really good question, Peggy, so at this point, I can't say with full confidence that we can um, that we are, we can open in-person school um, with the amount of staff members that um, have very good reasons not to, not to come back to in-person, and so at this time, we have approximately sixty staff members um, who have requested um, not to come back to um, work in person due to a number of reasons. Um, no one has received formal approval yet, we were gonna start that um, following this meeting. Um, today I sent out an email that gave a formal deadline, um, because now it's getting critical that the rec- that the requests can't keep coming in because we have to plan. Um, right now, out of those sixty requests, um, we have about fifty certified staff and, and not, and ten non-certified staff. Out of those fifty certified staff, there are twenty-five classroom teachers. And so the twenty-five classroom teachers are the most critical to fill, although all fifty certified staff, all, actually, all staff, you know, are, are very fun, are cr- are very um, essential to a building running. But if you don't have a classroom teacher, um, you can't have students unattended, and so, some of the positions, um, we could not fill with a sub and still be able to open. Um, it's not ideal, but we could do it, but um, right now, we're looking at, and we're, we've contacted our subs all summer, asking who's planning on returning, a lot of our subs are um, either retired, and this is kind of like something for them to do, to just be engaged with our young people and stay working in our community. We, as of last year's data, we have twenty-seven substitute teachers who worked more than forty days last year, who are also available to substitute. Within that amount, though, our subs um, in particular, um, and they have the upper hand where some might just wanna work at elementary schools, some might just wanna work early childhood, some might just wanna work secondary. So we have twenty-seven subs who've confirmed that they will work full-time and twenty-five classrooms have to be covered. Um, what's concerning is that on a typical day last year, pre-COVID, we could have anywhere between thirty and fifty um, certified positions out any day, um, and that's before um, a pandemic, and so we have a job fair on Thursday, where we're recruiting and and we've been advertising pretty um, pretty hard across the community um, to try to recruit more people for our unfilled positions and for substitute teaching positions, and so at this time, I'm not for sure if we could open um, in-person, and so that's something we're gonna have to continue to look like, look at as we're monitoring um, the numbers as well. Um, we've spent a lot of time um, preparing the plan, and I think that we're, we're gonna need the plan eventually. Um, because when, it's not like when we come back, it's just gonna be a light switch and we come back and everything's back to normal, so eventually, we're gonna need the plan. And so it took months to put together, um, and a lot of dedication from so many stakeholders in the community, which Jennifer will acknowledge a little bit later. Um, but at this time, we have to have, you know, and, and we have to have staff that are gonna be able to be substitutes, that can be first-grade teachers, or third-grade ESL teachers, or a sped resource teacher, and so um, we wanna be confident in that as well. So, we're hoping to have more information for you um, next Tuesday on what those numbers look like. Um, staff members district-wide were given um, a deadline of noon on um, next Tuesday to submit, um, Dr. Avery Tatum first um, told people in the district um, and made them aware of COVID leave and told them that they could contact Human Resources if they had concerns about not returning to work. She made them first aware of that on July twenty-third, and so um, from July twenty-third until um, today, we've had um, sixty people reach out. Um, I think following this meeting and following the district's wide email that I sent today, I do anticipate that number going up. Um, the protocol for that is there's a specific form that was developed with our district attorneys on questions that are appropriate to ask. Um, oftentimes, if somebody talks about an underlying medical condition, we do ask for documentation from a um, a medical provider um, that does talk about the recommendation for them to work remotely, rather than just saying um, that somebody has asthma or somebody's obese, that they actually are making the recommendation that, that it's in their best interest, their health and safety to work from home. Um, and so that's um, what we really would like in the letter, to be consistent. Um, and people have been able to provide that documentation. Um, and so um, it's been a very kind exchange with people, we're trying to be um, as caring and responsive as we can. So that's, that's my update, and I can give you more numbers next week.
Thank you, Angie.
Other board members? Any other questions? Sorry, I'm getting my headset here, I had one last one, it was more of a comment than a question, but I have heard from some students who um, just would like to be in on conversations about all of this, and I would just like to send a shout-out to everybody district-wide, building-wide, if there's a way to have Zoom meetings with whole student populations to get input from them, feedback on how things are going, I think a lot of kids, especially in the middle school and high school, would really appreciate having a voice or, you know, just a place to comment, and especially since we're trying to work this year towards getting more students involved in our board uh, meetings and things like that, this would be, be a great way to get their input, so. That was my two cents, anybody else though, sorry, before I move on?
So right now, um, we, we did, we're not going to present the resolution to approve tonight, the, um, and so we moved that to a later date. And uh, we'll make sure that we, make sure that information is available to the public prior to that date, um. So, other questions? I did wanna just say, again, I, you know, we'll make sure that we, we're gonna put the PowerPoint um, on the website, I'll fix the slide about Labor Day and looking at, you know, that being our um, tentative, I love the way Tori said, that's kinda our re-evaluation date. You know, the nice thing about that is it gives the, the U of I students all come back on the twenty-fourth. And um, they'll hopefully get here and, and get into their protocols, which shield and, um, and then we can just look and reevaluate where we're at, at, at that point.
I wanna say one thing, also, uh, when Ann was reading uh, Julie Pride's letter, the uh, email that came today, let's remember what she has said that Urbana's plan meets guidelines and exceeds guidelines. And we're talking about state of Elin- you know, Champagne County, State of Illinois, CDC as well, and I hope that that is some type of calming measure or relief to families and friends and community members that, look at us, Urbana. We're ex- we're exceeding at this in a really, really bad time in all of our lives that we haven't had to live through. And um, we are gonna get through this, and it's not gonna be easy. And we have to take care of each other. You know, check in on everybody, make sure everybody's doing okay, because you know, we're, like, like it, it says behind nearly everybody out there in the boardroom, you know, we're better together. Let's not be against ourselves as a community, we, we need everybody's help. And we just have to be as positive as we can, that we're gonna do this, and we're gonna do it right. And like Urbana tends to do, is we do it better than everybody else does, and we are usually sometimes the ones writing the handbook on this is how things go. So let's do this. You know, really, let's, let, let's just do this and put a lot of minds to rest, that we're gonna be okay. We, we are, we're gonna be okay, we're gonna get through this, and we really need to have a, a, a calm head about all this, I know everybody, I know everything's so uncertain, everything is in our general lives year to year as it is. This is just one heck of a road bump that we've had to hit, and, and we're gonna get past it.
Thanks, Ruthanne. Any, any other last comments or questions, and I was, we're approaching the midnight hour, so.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll try to keep it brief, I, I wanna thank everybody who worked, I mean, the, the, not just the the staff here on this call, but tons and tons of people who have worked really hard with changing requirements, as this, has gone on and on and on, and trying to come up with a plan that would, you know, would meet the needs of public health and, and meet as many of the educational needs as possible, given the constraints, I appreciate all that. I also wanna, wanna, um, you know, you know, from the early draft of the plan to, to what we've seen tonight, I wanna, I really appreciate the willingness to push back the in-person start date. Uh, you know, given the numbers on the ground here in Champagne County. I mean, none of us are, 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 are trained in public health or, or public health experts, and so, you know, we're, we're only following the guidance that, that's given to us. So I, I appreciate a willingness to, to reconsider things and to, and to listen um, as, as we go forward. Thank you.
Well, thank you again. Well, thank you again, just like Paul said, this has been a really, really helpful presentation, and I, I'm really glad that we got a chance to talk about it tonight. And in, in the end, I'm kind of glad that we'll, we'll be able to talk about it again next week. Um, so I encourage, and I hope everybody gets some sleep tonight, and I, especially all you administrators who've been busting your chops all summer to try and pull this together, um, building the plane as they fly it, as they say. Um, everybody on the board, this is giving us a week to go over these plans more thoroughly between now and then, to get a list of questions together that we couldn't think of tonight or that we're too tired to think of tonight, please put them together, please send them to the administrators earlier rather than later, so they have a chance to look through the questions you've got, get them answered so that come next week, they've got answers to everything, and we can, we can take care of any last-minute things, because I'm sure that we're gonna be getting more citizen statements, more people from the community asking questions, so they'll wanna be able to work those all out as soon as possible. So thank you again, this has been really helpful. Um, I just wanted to go back, the, since this was actually a, a study topic, part, part nine, we, we kind of ignored section seven and eight of the um, agenda, but just to cross the Ts and dot the Is, um, we don't have any policy review for tonight, we had no administrative reports apart from this one study topic. And I think, I think, maybe I already mentioned it, but my, I was so eager to jump into reading out the citizen statements that I may have neglected to mention that we did receive some communications that were not in writing, we got a video compilation sent from some citizens with their opinion about um, wanting to wait for 14 days with no new cases, as well as a parcel of postcards that were received from citizens with the same sentiments um, that were shared with the, with the, the board and with staff and everything, but um, I couldn't read out the postcards individually, didn't have the video, we don't show the videos, but I just wanted to acknowledge that we did receive them and we read them all, and we thank you for your comments. Okay, um, item 11.0 is a call for special, excuse me, future special and executive meetings. We do have one scheduled for next Tuesday, uh, August 11th at 6:00 PM, um, which will be an exec session. And I don't know that we have any superintendent's report following this big report, but do we Jennifer?
I, I do wanna do one quick, and Paul and Angie kind of said it, but I know if you've not been in our document, I want you to go in, and I, I know you can't read all these names, but I, and I'm not going to because it's almost midnight, but I, I just want people to um, and know that, and Paul said this very well already, just the countless, countless hours that people have put in, um, starting in May, all, I mean, we're still meeting every week. Um, so this is the Instructional Planning Committee, um, there's, this is the Facilities Committee, we've had uh, multiple subcommittees that are meeting weekly, um, and so there are a lot of people who have just, um, just really, really, um, you know, on behalf of their colleagues and on behalf of Urbana students and families, put in so much time and effort. And I know I can't read all their names, but I really want people to go into the plan and, um, you know, send these people a shout-out in an email and just thank them for their hard work on behalf of um, their colleagues and their grade-level friends, their teammates and department people, um, because they really did, um, you know, do the lion's share of a lot of this work with the team. So I, I just wanted to take that really quick shout-out and have an opportunity to do that.
Thank you, yes, we, it's all about the kids, it's obvious, everybody cares so much from that list, it's tons of great, great, great ideas we've heard tonight, I'm exhausted. So I'm gonna say, do we have any board reports? No, I don't have any either, so if we have none, I would like a motion to adjourn tonight.
So moved.
Moved and seconded, roll call please Ruth Ann. Oh, you're muted.
Oh, you're muted, sorry.
Member Carter?
Yes.
Member Patton?
Yes.
Member Plasky?
Yes.
Member Fisher votes yes, Vice President Exum?
Yes.
And President Hall?
Yes, meeting is adjourned, thanks everyone.